We haven't.
There we go.
All right.
Now you're good.
Good morning, everybody. This is Humboldt County Commissioner French. We're going to start this meeting of the Humboldt County Commission Monday, February 7th, 2022. It's 8:30. First order of business is pledge of allegiance. Would you please join me?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic of this country, to the Constitution of this nation, and to the Constitution of this country.
Move on to item three, which is public comment. General public comment is designated for discussion only. Public has the opportunity to address the commission on any matter that is not appearing on the agenda. However, no action on the part of the commission can be taken on that matter. Come on up. Good. I get you to state your name for the record.
Yeah, my name is Deborah Gay, and I have a couple of things I wanted to do first. I'll let you guys have this one.
Great, thanks.
Over here.
Are these just one package? It's all together?
Yeah, that's all different information that I have given you guys. Now, this thing that I want to read to you is about seven minutes long. You know, there's only a minute, but if I can't read it, then I'll just have somebody else come and help me read it.
We'll give you seven.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
So I'm here because I'm tired of seeing people dying from this so-called pandemic that we have. And I've got a statement here. I've addressed you guys many a times. I've given you lots of documents to for informational stuff. I don't know if you've ever even looked at them, but so what I want to do is read you this. I'm putting all of you on notice right now about the information that is not being given to the public and, in my opinion, should be as prevalent as the storyline that we are getting. You should all know about the COVID-19 vaccine is doing to some people by now. If not, here is some information that you should know. The vaccine does not keep people from getting passing or passing the infections to others. Natural immunity in the past has not been examined for those who have had COVID-19 injections. However, it has been found that those who had the COVID-19 has have resistance to up to five times of those who get the vaccine and last for up to two years. There are so many. There are also many having life-threatening reactions to these vaccines and of which we don't eat, we don't, we don't know what long-term effects will present, other than the cases of myocarditis in the younger people. We certainly don't have long-term information of the children six months to 12 years old, and they're, they're the ones who don't usually get hospitalized with the disease of COVID. And the Omicron variant has been causing sniffles and headaches, not even a bad case of the seasonal flu. I currently, I current, the current narrative has caused terror and anxiety. People have been locked down, and the lockdowns have been more harmful than the disease of mental condition, alcoholism, drug abuse, and suicide. Studies released last week from the Johns Hopkins of the effects of the lockdowns in this country, and they are calculated at 0.2% of the COVID infections were prevented from the lockdowns, and much more damage occurred from the lockdowns than helped stop the pandemic. We need to get out, we need to get our thinking more aligned with the science, what science is telling us, instead of those who are profiting from this pandemic. I think we all know who I'm speaking. If you don't, his name begins with an N, F, and Z, and an I. If you have not read the book from Robert F. Kennedy Jr. called The Anthony Fauci, The Real Anthony Fauci, I highly recommend it. In the 1980s, it has been revealed that during the AIDS epidemic, Fauci and his cronies at Big Pharma got rich from using the AZT drug, which was also shown to cause organ failure. But the failure was blamed on the AIDS condition and not the AZT that was pumping into the affected patients. He is repeating this pattern here again, reaching, getting rich along with Big Pharma selling snake oil, using fear tactics, and that pales in comparison to that used in the AIDS epidemic. Many people died they should not have because of Anthony Fauci, and now the blood is on his hands. He will go down in history with those of Hitler and Stalin. Do you want to be on this list as an accomplice to the murder on a scale that we haven't seen since World War II? For people who hold a position in this community such as you, there is no excuse for not knowing this information. It is not readily available to most because of the censorship by big tech and mostly by people who just want to follow the narrative blindly and stick their heads in the sand and don't make waves. States that have remained open during this pandemic have feared much better than those who have locked down masks, masked up and scared. Some are still following Anthony Fauci like he is some kind of demagogue. It is time to say enough. This thing is over, but the big money doesn't want it to end. Anything wrong with this picture? We have tried countless times to bring this information, other than countless times to bring you information, other than the current narrative, and I do not think you listen. Studies have found that the initial treatment and medication work, early treatment and medication work. But this too has been demonized and silenced. I speak of ivermectin, vitamin D, vitamin C, others which have been repressed. Dr. Fauci's remdesivir has been shown to cause organ failure, just as he so-called, as a so-called cure for AIDS. I have given you the Ebola study, so you do have that. Please see the Ebola study and note that Fauci's favorite hymn was that there was no random trials for hydroxychloroquine and ivermectin, even though both had been on the market for decades. Please note that the requirements for a randomized trial with the COVID-19 vaccine has not been subjected to, and therefore all, the crises for getting vaccinated at a minimum and unscientific at best. And by now, with all the information that I have given you, wouldn't you agree that it's time to get our heads out of the sand? You should know what works and what doesn't, unless, of course, we simply do not want to read it because it does not fit the storyline from the NIAID, the brainwashing that comes along with it. We need to examine the information, not just, not just what is easy because we are told to do so from people who are making a fortune off of us with through government subsidies, but it is still us, the taxpayers. Meanwhile, inflation is going to kill it, is going to kill more people than the pandemic if we continue down this path. I brought you the Nuremberg Code document, which is attached to this document. Please note that the mandatory vaccine violations, the Nuremberg Code Articles Number One, Four, and Five at minimum, and therefore should not be allowed to go forth based on the international laws. Also, please note that there is no provision for emergency mandates in the Nuremberg Code. What the COVID-19 vaccine does to people is just not, is just now being exposed. There are more to come in extremely near future. When you realize the consequences of your decisions, will you be able to live with yourself knowing that you did, what you did to our small community? I highly suggest that you all start finding the truth and get it out there as fast as you can. You have nothing to worry about from me and the many unvaccinated people. The ones you might, you must really worry about are the ones that were intimidated into getting this vaccine. I personally would not like to be in your position right now. The community will judge you for what you have done in forcing them into taking experimental vaccines, which are not approved by the FDA, only commodity, and it's not in the U.S. There will be many, they will be the ones angry with you for luring them in to get in the COVID vaccine. You all could learn a lesson from your nearest little community, Battle Mountain. They have stood strong. They had stood up against the lies, and they are fighting the good fight and standing strong with their community and listening to their people and finding all the information, not just what one side would have you believe. I personally would not like to be Dr. Stringham right now. Of all people, he should have known and he should have done the research, which he has not, not just take the money and run. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any additional public comment? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Kelly Anderson. And according to our governor, the current virus is to be treated like a cold. You need to educate yourself. Your doctor Stringham can't find the actual effects of the experimental drugs, apparently, but you can get this figured out and listen to those who have the information for you right here if you need it. Senator Ron Johnson sent a letter to the Secretary of Defense demanding information on the shockingly high COVID-19 vaccine injuries amongst military personnel. Okay, so the five-year average from 2016 to 22, the medical conditions after this increased to, let's see, increased 10 times from the five-year average of 82,000 to 863,000. The highest medical conditions related to these injections, beginning with hypertension at 200% increase, diseases of the nervous system involving the brain, 100, 1,048%. And then going on down little by little, malignant cancer, multiple sclerosis of the esophagus, malignant cancer of the esophagus, and then malignant cancers of digestive organs, Julian Var syndrome, breast cancer, demyelinating, which is of the spinal cord, malignant neoplasms of the thyroid and the endocrine glands, that's still at 474% increase, female infertility, pulmonary embolism, migraines, ovarian dysfunction, testicular cancer, tachycardia. And this is all in our military personnel, our young men from 18 to 24 years old. And they're, they're not being asked if they want this, this injection. They're being given it with no consent, consent or not. This morning, on my way, this morning before I came in, I received another information that you might want to know. I am not going to lose this. A scientist had a hunch, and he checked one vaccinated individual and one unvaccinated individual. He checked their blood, looked at their blood before they had sexual intercourse, they had sexual intercourse, and the following blood, this is, you know, preliminary, this is like one, I don't know how many that he's tested, but the unvaccinated individual's blood changed to reflect the vaccination changes in the vaccinated individual. So sexually transmitted, really? We need to stop it, and it needs to stop now. Thank you.
Thanks. Any additional public comment? Could I get you to state your name for the record, please? We're trying to record all this, so.
My name is Kim Christopherson. I'm here because I have a concern with the ethical decisions made by the Health Board representatives in Humboldt County during this current pandemic that reflects guidelines from our state governor, CDC, and FDA. I'm aware that our commissioners here and health board members and hospital administration have been provided research studies and science explaining the effective treatment contrary to the CDC guidelines. It looks like you're already reading it, and I don't know how much you've already read and how much has been passed on to you, but I'm sure I'm not the only one who's concerned. Do you know that there's thousands of doctors and nurses and scientists speaking out from across the country and across the world, exposing the truth of the true COVID-19 origins and the effect, the effective treatment that's being withheld for millions of patients? You won't see any of that information on the media because we're only allowed to listen to the science from the one virologist that's getting paid the most money in the United States. You won't see any of the protocols on successfully treating patients with previously approved medication on the news. You won't see that El Salvador, Guatemala, Bolivia, Mexico, India, and some African countries provide for their own people or sell the same inexpensive over-the-counter medication and vitamins to prevent and treat COVID-19. This can be found in vending machines, door-to-door distribution, and they even have like little COVID packets. I encourage you to read the studies that you've been provided. I really wish that you would, you would read them and that you would open your minds. I'm not paid to research. I'm not paid to be here. I'm, I'm not paid to convince the community whether or not to wear the useless mask to take the mysterious injections. I'm just here to inform the people that we're being lied to. There are people getting paid to encourage and coerce the compliance. That should raise a red flag. Look, who's making the most money out there and what agenda they're pushing? Why is it that we get the influenza every year and people die every year? Why is it now called COVID-19, and each year it's a new variant? We have forced vaccines. They weren't forced before the virus killed people, they weren't forced years when the virus still killed people. There are people dying from the vaccines, and most complications are not being reported to the VAERS, V-A-E-R-S. People across the world are participating in protests against the vaccine mandates. There's a convoy in Canada and UK. Their people are sending thousands of dollars to them. They've been, their, their Facebook has been shut down. The GoFundMe, I don't know if it's just for the United States or for them in Canada, but it's been shut down. This Freedom March is to be silenced. Last month, there was a protest in Washington, DC. Whistleblowers, nurses, doctors, scientists, politicians, pastors, and attorneys are traveling across America in this Reawaken America tour. You can Google that, Reawaken America, to inform the people that with proper treatment, COVID has a 99% survival rate and that healthy immune systems are more effective than vaccines. So ask yourself, why would millions of people across the world go through all the hassle protesting, hassle of protesting to avoid the vaccine? The vaccine that we're told will save lives and prevent the virus. People have lost their jobs, unable to travel, unable to go shopping, eat at restaurants in some cities. Why some cities? Why would some cities be more affected than other cities? I have a concern with the vaccine being encouraged and administered without proper informed consent, listing ingredients, and side effects. Patients have the right to know what is in the shot. As a representative of Humboldt County, concerned with the health concerns of our residents, would you please look into providing additional educational pamphlets, put up posters? That includes what's in them, what are all the side effects. They need an informed consent. Another concern is that if effective early treatment is being withheld from patients in Humboldt County and the hospital is unwilling to share the protocols for COVID-19 treatment. I have formally requested local protocol information from HGH and received no reply. I've heard that other peoples have asked as well. I don't know if they went to the board meeting or what, but they are withholding this information. I assume they're following the treatment guidelines as recommended by the CDC, which states the use of remdesivir. Studies show that medication has fatal side effects. The negligence witnessed at HGH is or will be leading to deaths and lawsuits. Many residents have lost faith in the healthcare, in our healthcare system in Humboldt County and have received successful COVID treatment outside our county. I ask all of you sitting here before us to take some time and visit with the Lander County manager and commissioners. I don't know if everybody here has heard what our governor, when our governor shut down the state, Lander County did not shut down their economy during the pandemic, and they refused to accept the financial compensation from the American Rescue Plan Act project and expenditure plan. They did not get compensated for that. Final note for the listeners here, if you wanted to do some of the research, because you can't see, but papers are being passed around, check the GatewayPundit.com, RonJohnson.Senate.gov, Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional public comment? Come on up.
I'll be brief.
I need you, I need you to.
I'll state my name.
Can you get close swing here?
It's hard to pick it up in this room because it's.
I'll state my name, and I'll be very brief because I didn't come here to speak. I came here to listen. I'm the new guy in town, and I'm just going to say everything these ladies have said is correct. If you look at both sides of the coin, there is no pandemic, there is no pandemic. My dad was a doctor, and he said to read everything before you make a decision. He was a doctor of political science. This is a political, a global political science experiment, and anybody who follows the mainstream narrative is a sheep. So all I'm going to say is my name is Kevin Bodecker. I'm the new guy in town. I will be back.
Good.
Thank you.
Any additional public comment?
My name is Paul Tonger, and I just wanted to fill in a couple of holes that, to go along with what everybody else has said. The NIAID that Tony Fauci runs is also supported by Bill Gates. Bill Gates is the man who wants to depopulate this planet. Something wrong with that picture? And the other thing is the convoy that's moving up in Canada right now had a GoFundMe page through Facebook. They had collected $10 million, $10 billion. Facebook shut their page down and confiscated $10 million, gave it to Black Lives Matter. Thank you.
Additional public comment? Not seeing any additional public comment. We're going to move on then.
Mr. Chair. I would like to comment, please. Everything that you have said is true, and we're not getting enough out in the, in the public to help those that, that do get the COVID. We did do another brochure after I got back from about three months of COVID myself. It was very helpful. It's not enough, I'm sure. And, you know, we're, we're not stopping those that, we still have a choice, let's put it that way, to go ahead and take a shot or not take a shot. The military doesn't, but that's a completely different thing. And if the military says, look, we're not going to take the shot, then they're going to have to say that. And, you know, I mean, everything that, that Deborah Gay said, I've read, I've seen, I've talked, and you're completely right, and thank you for coming here. I would like to see if there's anything specific that you think would help the, the community. Anything that we could do to help that would be very beneficial if we could, you know, if we could put out more, more stuff. I was at, at the hospital myself, got sent home with nothing. That's why I questioned it when it came to the next commissioners' meeting. And included with the original brochure are the supplements that are very helpful for those that get the COVID. Thank you.
I think, my name's Deborah Gay. What I would like to see is a more open dialogue with the commissioners, being able to bring you information, talk to you people, get with some of the other commissions in Battle Mountain. They have a clinic that is open to prescribe the ivermectin and hydrochloroquine. They have somebody there, a doctor that they're not. The hospital here will demean, push out, not allow anyone that has ivermectin or hydrochloroquine. They will not let them prescribe it, and no matter what you say, they will not let you prescribe it, anybody that works within that hospital. They are killing the doctors around here, and there's no other doctors but what's inside the hospital. So this county is pretty much, we're S.O.L. We have no doctors that we can get here that will prescribe the medication that the public would love to have. And we need to figure out how we can get somebody here or a clinic open for these people to be able to get the medication that they need. Early treatment, you wouldn't find half these people in the hospital. Early treatment works. I guarantee you, it works, and people would not be getting sick. Remdesivir is, I got to tell you, the, the people in the community, the people in the United States, they look at hospitals right now as the new ovens. You know what the new ovens means, right? Okay? That's what they think the hospitals are because they bring them in, they put them on IV, they fill up their lungs with fluid, they put them on remdesivir. It kills your kidneys, renal failure, fills up your lungs even further, then they put you on that stupid ventilator, and they kill you. You don't see people dying. This pandemic, have you ever seen someone fall over dead on the street? Have you seen people dying at home? Have you seen the homeless dying? No. The only place you see people dying is the hospitals. Come on, why?
Okay.
We really need to work on this. It is extreme. They are, they're killing us, and the depopulation is true. You guys really need to do some heavy, heavy research on this because they are going to hurt us. And I've heard that they're also treating their EMTs at the hospital with disrespect, the ones that are unvaccinated. They're trying to make them sleep somewhere else, move them somewhere else so they're not around the vaccinated. If you're vaccinated, what the hell are you worried about? What are you worried about? You're vaccinated. Why are these people being treated like less than human? I got to tell you, I ain't happy with what's going on in the city. We need to really look into it, and I need to talk to you because I want to know how to get rid of Stringham. So that's on the agenda. We will be working on that one. Thank you.
Mr. Chair. Could either you or Dave explain what, what we have to do with the hospital? How that works?
Yeah, I just for the, it's a, it's a, it's a district or county district hospital. Okay, so we service more than just Humboldt County with it, but as a function of that, there's a, a portion of net proceeds and some ad valorem taxes that go into the, into the budget for the hospital. As such, because we do have a connection with some of the financial side of the hospital, we have a, one member of this board who sits on the hospital board. The, the, as far as policy and procedure goes, we are limited in terms of what we bring to the hospital, except through our representative on the hospital board. The member, our membership on the hospital board is in, not in a chair capacity by, by rule. rule within the hospital board, the county commissioner who sits on the hospital board does, cannot sit in the, either the vice chair or the chair's seat. We do have control, or at least we have signature on some of the offers and some of the certifications for doctors that are returning and doctors who are interested in coming to Humboldt County. So we do have some signature on that, not all, the only authority, but some of that. As far as the overall budget, and as far as pricing, as far as, you know, the contracting and whatnot, other than our vote on the board, that's, that's the extent of our involvement in it.
So as you can see, the hospital's pretty much on their, on their own. You know, there's been a debate back and forth on the different medicines that you said. They refuse to give it, their doctors refuse to give some of it. They did set up a clinic over there for certain ones, and you can get that there. But that's about as far as it's gone so far.
I think though, ultimately, if, and I'll just say this, we're going to have to move on, because we've got a pretty full agenda here, but I think ultimately, we have, from your standpoint, what the, the material you're bringing forward and to this board and whatnot, I think if I was sitting in your seat and, and had that, wanted to bring that forward to the folks at HGH, I would, I'd get on, I'm hoping you are, you're, you're in their public comment portion and presenting to them on their, their hospital board, because they're elected, you know, most of the seats are elected at the hospital board anyhow for that reason. So that, from a, from a policy perspective, contract perspective, certainly, that's, that is where I would, I would definitely put it.
One other thing, Deborah Gay, you guys are doing a serious contract, and if you have a doctor in here to, but, or you said, um, better, or, they only have a doctor on site, and that site is site, ivermectin is, you know, and you can get somebody to, both sites, not one.
Okay. We got, real briefly, we've got to get moving, so, yes, sir?
Daniel Gay, I wanted to make your comment, that he said was correct, but that, that choice, meaning, why would he let it get your shot, or you have to quit? That's, that's not a choice.
Dan, that is true, but you still have a choice.
You have a choice.
Okay? I'm not saying it's the greatest thing in the world, that somebody comes in and says you're going to lose your job.
That's a choice. And then the other thing is, you guys feel like we do, they don't support us by going to the hospital meeting, giving us a little bit more, you know, you guys standing in a hospital meeting with us, they bring that little lever over the top, and we sure appreciate it if you can join on board with us and fight the good fight, because this is for grandkids.
Yeah. All right. Okay, we're going to move then to item six. We've got some people in the room that, for item six, which is Employee of the Month. We'll go ahead and, and Dave, you go ahead and handle that?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So Employee of the Quarter for this previous quarter here is Under Sheriff Kevin Malone. And so, Mr., Under Sheriff, would you want to come on up and Sheriff, if you don't mind? Also, I believe Elaine and I, if you want to come up as well. So I'm going to start by reading a letter that we received, Under Sheriff, from Sheriff Allen. I would like to nominate Under Sheriff Kevin Malone for Employee of the Quarter. About six years ago, there was a program in Winnemucca headed by the Winnemucca Police Department named Shop With A Cop. This was Christmas time, Christmas gift program for some of our community youths. Under Sheriff Malone found out that the program was going away, and he felt the law enforcement community had to do something. Under Sheriff Malone decided it would be best to start a stuff-a-police car with a gift, and he arranged to hold this inaugural event with Walmart. Under Sheriff Malone also had to determine how the donations would work, as Shop With A Cop was a nonprofit organization and the sheriff's office is not. Under Sheriff Malone contacted the Frontier Community Coalition for assistance, and they agreed to partner for this new undertaking. In addition, Under Sheriff Malone arranged a partnership with all the first responder agencies in the area to participate on the specific date. As a result, this program has been in existence for the past six years and has been invaluable for the county as a whole. Thousands of Humboldt County children have benefited and have received Christmas gifts as a result of Under Sheriff Malone's undertaking. I am nominating Under Sheriff Malone for the Employee of the Quarter for such a positive and successful undertaking that affects not only the Humboldt County Sheriff's Office, but Humboldt County as a whole. Cordially, Mike Allen, Sheriff.
Congratulations. You know, you still, we also got the Under Sheriff Malone, his home flag from the sheriff's office, just wanted to recognize Kevin for his exceptional dedication to Christmas programs program. Thank you for your self-dedication to this program over the last season. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to skip down through the agenda a little bit, we've got some folks from Orvata here. So we're going to move on to item 18, so we can get them up and going. This is item 18, Orvata Community Citizens Group Transportation Letter. It's consideration, discussion, possible approval to include the Humboldt County Board of Commissioners to the attached letter for Thacker Pass Concerned Citizens and Lithium Nevada Corporation as a additional supporter in efforts to encourage Nevada Department of Transportation to consider improvements to US 95 Highway between Winnemucca and McDermott to advance the Thacker Pass lithium mine opening. Morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you. I'm Gina Amato, I'm a farmer out in Orvata. I'm here speaking on behalf of Thacker Pass Concerned Citizens, I'm a co-chair of that committee. I'm here with Maria Anderson.
I'm Maria Anderson, Community Relations for Lithium Nevada.
Okay. And we have been, as you know, we've been working really hard with the community and with Lithium Nevada to address the concerns with the Thacker Pass project. And one of those main concerns is the roadway, the haul route, 95 and 293. We've put together a letter to send to state leaders, and we're hoping to get county approval, and hoping that you would want to sign on. We want to prevent a united, present a united front when we send this to state leaders. And we think that that would be best suited if we had approval from the county, along with Lithium Nevada, who has co-signed. And if this is something that you think that you can sign on to, we're happy to modify it for your signature. I have, would you like me to read the letter out loud?
Yes, if you wouldn't mind reading it into the record.
Okay. We have not sent this yet, but we plan to. This is, it will be copied to all the state leaders, but this is addressed to Governor Sislak. Dear Governor Sislak, Thacker Pass Concerned Citizens and Lithium Nevada Corporation are seeking your assistance to improve the safety and economic well-being of the Humboldt County communities around LNC's Thacker Pass lithium mine project. In this letter, we provide a brief history of the relationship between TPCC and LNC, detail the need for state assistance, and invite you to visit our community. Prior to the formation of TPCC in 2021, residents of the Quinn and Kings River Valleys attended several open houses sponsored, excuse me, by LNC and its predecessor about the potential development of a lithium mine at Thacker Pass near the community of Orvata. It wasn't until, pardon me, lost my place. It wasn't until after the Bureau of Land Management approved the environmental impact statement for Thacker Pass in January 2021, that the local communities and LNC became involved in a working, in working together to address a number of potential land, water, air, and transportation impacts. These potential impacts cause considerable community safety and way-of-life concerns, which continue to this day. The majority of Orvata area residents recognize that state and national law, regulation, and policy supports mining of strategic minerals such as lithium. However, the residents are being asked to bear the direct impacts of the Thacker Pass project and are expected to shoulder that burden for the sake of the common good. The local communities and LNC are working cooperatively to ensure that the Thacker Pass project is implemented in a way that minimizes adverse impacts and maximizes benefits. In 2021, LNC and the TPCC formed a working group and jointly hired facilitators to guide discussions about the project and its impacts. Numerous meetings have been held by this working group to document and prioritize community concerns, identify potential working, excuse me, potential opportunities, and become better informed on ways to manage the changes that will come to the community as a result of the project. One of the group's accomplishments has been to design an improved, design an improved intersection at Route, US Route 95 and State Route 293. The end-dining process is underway for this intersection and must be completed for Thacker Pass to move forward. The working group is also in discussions with Mr. Chris Sanchez of, of the Governor's Office of Economic Development on additional improvements to infrastructure in the area. This working group has made progress, but now needs the support of the governor and the state of Nevada to move forward. Orvata sits at the junction of US Route 95 and SR 293, and its citizens are at risk from safety hazards caused by degraded highways, lack of passing lanes, inadequate shoulders, and minimal maintenance and law enforcement staff. These roads were not designed for this level of traffic and are ill-equipped from an engineering and safety perspective. Development of the Thacker Pass project with its projected 150-plus truck and staff trips per day further necessitates the need to pursue road improvements. There are significant concerns about the local impacts of this project, in particular about the safety and sustainability of US Route 95 and SR 293 to serve both their designed purposes of carrying agriculture, traffic from cars and trucks, and the exponential increase of traffic that would serve the lithium mine. LNC and TPCC have been working together to delineate necessary repairs and upgrades to these routes. However, given the role the state plays in road and highway management, this is a critical area where we need your leadership and assistance. We are doing our best to help implement state and national policy but cannot do it alone to see firsthand the issues that we are facing and the assistance that we need from the state to be successful in coexisting with the Thacker Pass lithium mine project. We ask that you and key members of your staff visit the Orvata area to experience our unique environment and culture and to tour the proposed mine site. Thank you for your time, we look forward to working with you in the future. And I've got my contact information there as well.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Mr. Chairman, I, I should have weighed in earlier, but I wanted to see Gina sweat a little bit.
I do. Because speaking in public is not my strong suit.
But out of, you know, full transparency here, I am a member of the Thacker Pass Concerned Citizens Group, because I live in Orvata, not as a commissioner, but as, as a citizen of that, that community. And we've worked really hard, and I think really well, together with Lithium as a group, to address, to, to identify some of the issues that, that we see coming on the horizon with the mine, the traffic, and all that stuff. One of, some of the, the issues that we have been, you know, that we can agree needs to be fixed as the mine, the community is, we've worked really hard on, on, on identifying a new site for a school, or the relocation of the school, because it sits on 293 there and not in a good, good, good spot. And we've gotten, we're going, that's moving along really good, we have some sites identified, it'll just take a little bit of more work on that. The traffic, we both agree that, you know, we've seen the traffic on 95 grow tremendously in the last 20 years. The Boise Valley is one of the fastest, if not the fastest, growing area in the United States. Many people are using 95 these days, both commercially and, you know, just individually driving that road. And with this, with, with the mine coming in there, you know, we were told there'll be up to 150 trucks, that doesn't count the thousand workers that'll be going out there every day during construction, 300 that, that would be traveling that road. And so it's not only for the safety of the residents and people on that road, it's, it's for the safety of the mine workers and stuff that will also be using that road. So that's, that's why we can, we can, this is beneficial to all of us. The facilitators have been, CDR has been a great deal of help, helping us work together and coming up with, with solutions that, that we both can agree on. There will always be issues that we will have differences on, and, and we'll have to continue to work on to get through them. But this is one issue that we agree on, and it was in, from my encouragement to get the Community Thacker Pass Concerned Citizens Group to come to the commission and ask that they also support this letter going to the governor, because we, we don't seem to get very far. And I've, I've been on this commission now seven years, and Highway 95 has been identified as a top priority, and as far as traffic needs and improvements go. And we've seen a little bit, but not near enough. And knowing that we've got a meeting coming up with the end dot here soon, I thought it would be nice if we could have this, this letter to present, that they'd have that ahead of that meeting, so that we know where, where our priorities lie here. So, that's all I have to say.
Thanks, Commissioner. I, I share your concerns on it. I, you know, before lithium was even on the radar screen, it was just a kind of a prospect out there in the, in the stratosphere, but it wasn't really something that we were talking about in terms of reality. Before that, the issues on that, on that road for 95 was, was front and center. I mean, we, every single, I've been on this board now, I'm, I'm coming up on 12 years now, and every single meeting we've had with Department of Transportation has had to do with the, the safety on 95. And I think we've, I think they've done the best they could, you know, with what they had to work with, but I think it's time that we push this forward with this, with Lithium Nevada being in, in a reality at this stage, I think it's important for us to move this forward. And I think if we're going to do any economic development in the McDermott or Vata area in the future, anything else, not even talking about the Boise Valley, which is a huge issue, if without that, we're, we are setting ourselves up for a major, major issue with, with regard to that road. So I, I'm in complete support of this letter, I think it's, I think it's high time we do it, and I think it's, we should follow it up with, with contact with, with the governor's office. Any of the other commissioners have anything?
Yes, I, I would agree with you, and I like what's being presented. I want to go back to, if I hear you correctly, that you'll be sending this to legislators as well? Perfect. I think that's very.
I have a copy here of, that has the CC line of everyone we intend to send it to. But if we need to modify this, if we can get the commissioner to, to send this out with not just our signatures, the community and Lithium Nevada, but with the, you know, signature joint, just to, we really feel that presenting.
And I think if we're going to do any economic development in the McDermott-Orvata area in the future, anything else, not even talking about the Boise Valley, which is a huge issue, if without that, we're, we are setting ourselves up for a major, major issue with regard to that road. So I'm in complete support of this letter. I think it's, I think it's high time we do it, and I think it's, we should follow it up with, with contact with the Governor's Office. Any of the other commissioners have anything?
Yes, I would agree with you, and I like what's being presented. I want to go back to, if I hear you correctly, that you'll be sending this to legislators as well? Perfect. I think that's very important.
I have a copy here that has the CC line of everyone we intend to send it to. But if we need to modify this, if we can get Commissioner to send this out with not just our signatures, the community and Lithium Nevada, but with, you know, signature joint, just to, we really feel that presenting a united front on this will go a long way. So we can modify that. But I do have a copy that will show you everyone we intend to send it to. Can add if necessary.
Yeah, that was a concern. I just wanted to make sure that all the legislators would get it as well. Because working with the legislature last year, it was pretty obvious to me that it leans pretty far to the left, and the left is pretty into lithium mining right now. So I think, I think you would get some people to notice the problems with the road by sending it out that way.
We're also going to send it to our senators and representatives.
I'm in full support of it.
Mr. Chair, this is Commissioner Haas. I'm not in support of it at all. I would like to see TPC, or the, the letter sent without us on it at all. You guys just send it and not have the support of Humboldt County. Now, Dave, correct me if I'm wrong, but you guys backed off of support for lithium mine by the county commission. And Ron and I went up to Orvata and presented them with a Concerned Citizens way of getting involved in this. Have you actually got LNC to sign an agreement with you at all? Or is this just some more rhetoric out of LNC?
An agreement specifically that addresses the transportation?
As the Concerned Citizens. No, as the Concerned Citizens, for what we originally brought that to you.
We're still working through that process. Nothing has been agreed upon of this. We do strongly agree that this is necessary. We feel that this is necessary regardless if there is a lithium project going on or in the works. This is something that's been a problem for a while and will continue to be a problem, mine or no mine. So.
I completely agree with you. You know, been there, done that, seen what's there, completely agree with you that that area through Orvata needs to be changed, it needs to be done immediately, and that's just general traffic. And then you've got a mine out there that wants to bring 150-plus a day. They don't want to do anything about this. They want us to do it as taxpayers and fix that because they want this. And I already asked them when they, when they wanted to give you a $12 million school, put up the money. It's that easy. Put up the money. Show us that you in good faith would do that. But they haven't done anything. They haven't been willing to sign an agreement with Orvata and the Concerned Citizens up there, which are the closest to what's going to happen. And that's your right of having that. But I think that as far as Humboldt County is concerned, to sign a letter on our own, to send them in, to explain to them what's happening today, not if there's permits given to LNC for that mine, but what's happening today is terrible. And I think that that whole area through Orvata needs to be changed. And I wouldn't be in favor of Humboldt County signing on to this letter. I would be in favor of you guys sending it and going from there. And I think it'll hold, you know, as much there, and then we'll send a letter later, possibly, Ron was mentioning, you know, with regional transportation, because it's got to get fixed. But it doesn't have to get fixed just because of lithium mining.
Mr. Haas, this is, this is Chair French. I'd like to state for the record right now, this commission has not backed away from the work that we had done with Lithium. We have been involved actively on the cooperating agency status during the development of the EIS. We have been involved with the permitting side of this through NDEP from day one. And I would say that it is extremely important for this commission to weigh in with regard to the need for infrastructure improvement. And it's not just through the Orvata area. It is, we, the infrastructure on 95 from Winemucca to the Oregon State Line and past that is in dire need. This board has been on record and has been through Department, through two governors now, Department of Transportation, the Governor of Idaho, asking for an I-11 corridor to be selected. And it is, 95 is the top pick for I-11 corridor right now. Who knows how that's going to come out? They haven't, haven't said one way or the other. But the bottom line behind the addition, the asking of the I-11 had to do with that, the need for upgrading the entire road. The lithium project is, regardless of that, is, is a reason for us to move forward with this right now, obviously, because it's pending, the project's pending right now. We, you know, we're, it's no different than, than projects that occurred on the Eden Valley side of it when we were developing gold mines on the other side. You haven't, you have a company that has jumped through the hoops, has done the permitting, is in play, and you provide infrastructure for that working, that team that's going to work out there and the public who's going to use that road in addition to them. So I am in complete support of the letter going out as written right now. And I think as a commission, we need to be players with regard to the development of that access road as well as, as the development of that mine as it moves forward.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I think it needs to be brought out as well that it is not totally correct that they're not putting their own money into this. They have done the engineering and are prepared to put a new intersection where 293 comes into 95 right there in town. Right now, that, that would not work with trucks moving off there. There's no turn lane. It would, it would stop traffic. It would be a very big hazard, public, public safety hazard. So they have got the engineering, I think, pretty well complete. They just need NDOT's approval to get started on it. And I think it's, it's been a million or plus dollars there just to improve that, that intersection. And maybe Maria can tell us a little bit more. But they have, they have spent, they're going to be spending some of their own money to help, help get that safe.
Yep. That's Maria Anderson for the record. Yes, that's correct. We are waiting on the final approval decision for that to get the intersection improvements going.
Okay. Do you have a timeframe on that?
I'm sorry, I don't right now. I can get back to you on that, though. I believe it's.
I can just add to that. They want that intersection complete before construction starts. So it's.
With the construction trucks. Yep. So I heard the same thing. Mr. Hill, did you have something?
Yeah, this is Commissioner Hill. I have a question. So the big question is, what is the, what is the main intent of this letter? Are you asking for funding? Are you asking for permission? Are you asking for right-ofaways?
We're seeking funding.
You're seeking funding from the state level? Okay. I guess I would also maybe echo what Commissioner Haas said. You know, we, we created a group, a Concerned Citizens Group for that reason, I guess, to be more on the forefront of this fight, you know, for the community of Orvata, and to be an active speaking group for that. I would almost lean towards, at this point, the commission stay neutral, you know, and reserve our power, so to speak, as a, as a county to maybe further down the road, whether we go in support or in denial of this. I would be in support of the Concerned Citizen Group signing this off and going that route before we step in as a full support as the commission, since it seems to be there is a little bit of a mixed bag of thoughts on this. At this point, I would like to see the Concerned Citizens and Lithium Nevada go at this. You know, this is not going to be our last chance at the state. That's where I would stand right now.
Mr. Chair? I wish we could take Nevada Lithium out of this whole equation. If your families drove that road every day, I think you would look at this a little different. If your families got run off the road every day or every week because they drive, have to drive 95. If your kids that go to high school here and have to drive that road twice a day and get run off the road and one day somebody, one of them will get killed, you would look at this a little different.
This is an issue.
Mr. Chair?
And it's not about lithium. It's making that road safe. We've asked, can't get the state to do it, and if, maybe if the commission could add their name to this. If lithium doesn't happen, which.
We still need the road.
We still need that road fixed.
Yeah. And why don't we? We've already gone very public in terms of where we stand with lithium right now. So the lithium is a red herring right now. It's, recognizing that the lithium is a, is a corporation that is actually exercising its rights to extract minerals under the, under federal law and has jumped through all of the hoops and whatnot, we are, we're now at the position to where we are trying to mitigate the impacts that that kind of activity is going to have. Taking lithium completely out of it, we have, as a board, we have been more than vocal for years, I'd even say decades, about this road. And it isn't, the road that we're proposing and asking, the upgrades we're asking for would be identical if lithium wasn't even on the radar screen. What we are asking for is identical. And it is from, like I said, it is from the Oregon side all the way to Winemucca proper, and it, it has been needed for some time. And I have to, I have to agree. I think this, this is just an opportunity for us to join arms and try to, and try to work as a group. I think that's why we have both, both entities sitting in front of us today as a, as a group. And I'm in support of this letter going out.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Haas, I'm in support of a letter going out, and I know how bad that road is. Been up there, been, been there many times for, for meetings with the Orvata people. But I wouldn't partner with LNC. I would do it on our own.
Well, this isn't partnering. We're not partnering with anybody. We're supporting, a request for a, a request to the Department of Transportation to elevate this project for the upgrading of Highway 95. And it, and it just so happens that not only is the Orvata Concerned Citizens involved with this request, but so is the folks that are moving forward with the permitting on a mine that's up there right now. It would be identical if it was on the other, if we were on the Eden Valley side and Nevada Gold was involved with it. It'd be exactly the identical conversation in terms of equipment, people, manpower, and other traffic. And this is no different. So, any additional comments? I'm going to call for a vote then. Any, we have a motion?
I just have one more comment. This is Commissioner Hill. So I guess the, I completely understand that the citizens of Orvata, you know, to make this road safer and to be pushing for, for new roads out there. I guess, again, the issue that I have is everything stated in the letter is basically leaning on Lithium Nevada and for all the trucks and, you know, that's, I guess, basically the leverage of this whole thing is Lithium Nevada. And I guess that's what I have the concern with right now is if we didn't have Lithium Nevada, we wouldn't have that leverage. Would we even be talking about this?
We have been for 10 years.
It's been on the, it's been on the agenda ever since I've been a commissioner. We've had Department of Transportation sit here and tell us yes, they, they see the need and they want to do anything, and nothing ever comes of it.
So as a resident, a longtime resident of Orvata, I guess if you can reiterate your leaving Lithium Nevada out of it, can you give me some more insight on, on what you go through out there, I guess?
Oh, well, as Ron stated, I don't even like to let my children ride our local bus simply because I don't, I want to keep them off of Highway 95 as much as possible. I worry every time. I avoid Highway 95 as much as I can in my travel around our community. And it's not just Highway 95, it's 293, which accesses the mine site. I also happen to move cattle through there, and I see how dangerous it is with the traffic we have now. I can't imagine what is going to happen when we have hazardous materials back and forth several times a day, the additional traffic. It is not, from a safety and engineering standpoint, it doesn't do as it is. So now we're going to compound the problem unless we get the needed repairs. And I feel that this gives, with us standing together, this gives weight and gives us a stronger voice as a community to get the job done.
So you're looking, you're seeking for 95 and also 293?
Yes.
Okay. And originally, I was just looking at 293, but I do agree that 95 could be, especially with that many more trucks on it.
Commissioner Hill, what they did is, as Ron mentioned, is LNC on their own redesigned the turning point for going to where the problem's going to be. As we well know, the road out there is governed by the state of Nevada. So there's no one that can go out there and just do this. It has to be approved by the state. And that's why I continue to say that a letter from you guys would hold very well. And you mentioned it, you know, that there was a million dollars that LNC was willing to put up. When you were asked that where the money is going to come from, you're going to ask for money from the state of Nevada to do this. So why, you know, why only a million dollars from LNC since they seem to be the biggest problem involved in it? But if you guys would send the letter yourselves, and we would send a letter from, from the commission, if we got to send the letter every week, you know, let's send it every week because that's got to get fixed. It has nothing to do with, you know, the upcoming LNC. That's got to get fixed. And it's been a problem for years, and it's getting worse and worse. The average, what did they tell us? The average was 51 or 53 mile an hour through Orvata in a 45 zone already?
65 miles an hour.
Excuse me?
What, 65 miles an hour is what people drive on an average. And yes, it's 45 speed limit.
You know, that's how much we paid attention to it and see what's going on. So it is a danger irregardless. And, you know, we need it fixed. But you guys send in a letter together, and I would get a, a agreement out, and I would have LNC send, or sign that agreement so that in the future, if this does, if permits go through, that you guys have something to fall back on. And that's what we started with, you know, in the first. That's what this was all about.
Well, that's an ongoing effort, and we are still working towards that. It's not something that can happen.
This letter represents that agreement.
This letter represents a portion of that agreement. So yes, this could be viewed as a commitment. And they have agreed to do the intersection simply because on their own accord, it, we can't, we don't know when it would get done if we went any other route. So, and they did not design that on their own. There was significant community input on that as well. So I wouldn't say that they took it upon themselves to do that. But I see that as a commitment as well, that they are wanting to help the cause.
And that, and that conversation has also gone to, gone to Department of Transportation as well in terms of that, that intersection, that, that proposed change for that, that road. It's not like, you know, it's a pie in the sky. I mean, everybody's been on board from this from the beginning, and Department of Transportation is there. And we have asked for, we have asked for upgrades to 293 as well as 95 since I've been on this board, and it has, it has fallen on deaf ears. We have, like I say, we have been involved with, from the federal side of it, we've been involved with it. From the state side of it, we've been to the Governor's Office and, and every, and every county commission in Idaho because we felt that they had the same at stake, same question at stake in terms of that access route into the Boise Valley. So it has fallen on deaf ears. To Commissioner Haas's point, where the request for money is, we're not really requesting money from NDOT. We're requesting NDOT to elevate this project on the list for federal funding. I mean, they come in here and tell us what their, their long-term plan is with regard to, on an annual basis in terms of federal funding, in terms of how they're going to use the. in terms of federal funding, in terms of how they're going to use the federal gas tax and federal funding. And what we're going to ask for is that for the first time in some, since I've been here, we're going to ask for you to elevate this road to the top of the list, not third or fourth in the, from the bottom. And, uh, I think that's, and I, from that standpoint, I, I think it's important for this board to sign onto this letter. The other thing is, and I'd like to point out to Commissioner Hill and Commissioner Haas, is that in front of us today on this item, we have a specific letter that is, that has, the, the, we have read into the record, the public has had a chance to look at with our agenda. And we, today, we're going to either vote yes or no to this. We're not going to vote, we're not going to change the letter. We're not going to, uh, provide an additional letter for, from the county. It's either yes or no based on this li, this item, the way it's written right now. So, um, with that, I, I'm, uh, I think I've made it pretty clear how I feel about it, but, um, Commissioner Tipton, you have something you want to add?
Yes, with, with what Commissioner Haas had brought up. And I know it's not written on the agenda to do it today, but I'm wondering if the effectiveness of this would be better that we write a letter separately from the commission and mentioning this as well as this. I'm in favor of the letter. I, I don't see any, I guess I don't see any drawback on why we shouldn't sign onto this letter. But then do we as a county need to separately write a letter to everybody as well and hit them with two of them?
Chair, I, I think that there wouldn't be any disadvantage to the county writing a separate letter. But there is definitely an advantage to us looking like we are all on the same page and, and, and wanting this. Not just, you know, we, we represent the citizens of Orvata, do we not? And, and, and as such, we, as a commission, there's not a problem that I can see with, with saying that we want to make sure that the safety of this highway is improved for the citizens of this county. It adds more weight with the county's name on this letter. That's why, that's why I suggested they bring it to the commission. And, you know, talking to NDOT, they have a certain pot of money. It's like 500 and some million, 700 million or something that they have to spend in this state. We're asking for a portion of that rather than go to, to Las Vegas where 99% of it goes. To take a little bit of that and bring it up here to Humboldt County. Because you want this lithium mine for the betterment of the state, for the betterment of this nation. Now help, now help us with it, you know? We're, we're not, nobody's here as saying we're opposed to it. But if it's going to go in, help us with it and give us a little bit of that money to improve that highway so that we feel safe and our, our families are safe using that road. And the weight of their, of this commission on that letter, I think is going to make a difference. Because like I say, this meeting with NDOT is coming up before our next meeting. And so I'd like, I'd like us on that letter for that reason too.
I agree. It's important that we have that ahead and, and, uh, yeah.
And I think, you know, I think if we could follow it up with a letter after the, the NDOT coordination meeting we have. But I think we should definitely pile on, on the, on the, this year, on the, on that, uh, when they come in to present to us. And even to our RTC with, with regard to our RTC, I think it's important that we, that we weigh in on with the RTC as well. We don't, normally we don't.
This Commissioner Hill, Chairman, can I have a comment?
Yes, sir.
Um, yeah, Commissioner Hill, again, I, this is a little broader than what I had originally thought. Um, listening to you guys all talk about this, um, you know, lithium mine or no lithium mine, it's, it's going to help the citizens of Orvata regardless. And when or the lithium mine starts producing, it's going to just make it that much better for
Yeah.
um, to have this in place beforehand. Uh, again, I would really like to see the Concerned Citizens Group be a strong proponent in, in all of this stuff. But knowing now that this is a broader problem that has been ongoing long before lithium projects or any other projects, I, I, I would be in complete favor of a separate letter. You know, I guess I, I don't see anything in this letter that, that holds us, holds us accountable to spend any county money, um, for this project. But again, I would very much be in support of a separate letter. And, uh, I, I really don't see any problem with supporting this, this letter as it's written, I guess.
Commissioner Hill, I would say, I, I appreciate your comments and I, um, I would say, keep, keep that one in your bonnet, uh, the, the request for the letter. When we have our, we have our coordination meeting with NDOT coming in. Cause I think we could then direct our county manager to produce a letter for our signature, our signature in addition to actually, and if we have to send a letter a month, let's do it.
Right.
Let's do it. As this thing, as this thing starts rolling on because, uh, you know, um, county manager and I have been to Idaho twice now over this thing. We, it was, yes, it was I-11. But the idea behind it was, is it was an opportunity to put those federal funds on a road that we knew needed to get some improvement. And they know we're coming. They know we're out there. It's like, it's not like we've been quiet about this. So I think if, if we have to do a, a letter, if we have to do multiple letters, if we, as, as this thing develops down the road, even if it doesn't develop down the road, if, if, what, I think we need to continue this. They, they threw us a bone last time. I think Commissioner Haas talked about it, uh, having to do with a flashing, flashing stop sign or a flashing, uh,
They wanted the county to take, to ma, maintain it.
They wanted us to maintain it.
Yeah.
And like they were doing us a favor. And, uh, you know, everybody knows 55 miles an hour through the middle of that 45 mile an hour zone in, in Orvata. So it's, it's on them. It's their job to get that done. We're just not, we just haven't been the squeaky wheel. So.
It isn't only for the, the residents in Orvata. You've got residents all the way along 95. Paradise Valley, Paradise Hill, Denial, McDermott, all use 95. This is for, for all those communities, not just Orvata.
Yep. Okay. Yes, ma'am.
Yep.
Come on up.
The comment.
No, please come up, ma'am. We really need to get you on our recording device.
Sometimes they can't hear you at voice.
Kim Kristofferson. I, I was just wondering, um, this is the first I've really listened to the Thacker Pass issue. I know, um, it has been an issue and I don't know the, the difference between the repairs or the proposal of the I-11 corridor. But what, is, is there somewhere that you specified what repairs you're wanting done? Like we want the road widened from here to here or we want to do that part?
Yeah, they've, they've got standards and guidelines in terms of the amount of traffic that it averages and whatnot in terms of the size and number of passing lanes and, you know, the shoulder width even, you know? So, and what we've asked for was an upgrade above where it's at right now to get particularly passing lanes.
Passing lanes.
Yeah.
And, and would that, would that, um, fit in with the potential growth to an interstate? Or would they, or would it have to like?
Hit it up.
I-11 is another.
I mean, they have, so they basically have to do it twice.
That, this Commissioner Hill, so that kind of tags along with the question I had. You know, we're really at this point not asking for anything specific. I don't think, correct me if I'm wrong. We're asking for
An upgrade.
Somebody to look at us.
Yeah.
We've got a problem here. Let's, yeah. And I think at that point they would make a plan. If they did decide to take on this project, they would make a plan and say, look, okay, we've got this potential mine coming in. We've got these potential hazards that are already existing. And then they would make a plan to what gets upgraded and what, right? Is that, is that correct?
Yeah.
At this point, we're just kind of asking to be moved up and looked at, I guess. And
Thanks for your
You know, and that, I guess, brings up another point if, if this I-11. I, I would imagine on the state level, they would look at, you know, whatever their potential plans are, how does this coincide? We're not rebuilding highways twice. And, you know, I, I would think that they would look at that stuff.
And we are, we are
Sometimes you wonder.
We are high on the, on the level of, we are high on that priority list in terms of the corridor that's there now.
Yeah.
And the reason we went to Idaho and, and tried to sell it to Idaho's congressional delegation had to do with the commerce that's coming out of the Boise Valley south. And the, you know, I-11 is going to be a major artery, you know, we're going to have I-5, I-11, you know, I-15, you know, they're all north-south, um, major arteries. And I-11 is going right up into a major, major metropolitan area that's growing as fast as any place in the nation right now and with a lot of commerce. So this just gives us that much more of, of a, a push. We have, we have garnered support from the Idaho side of it as well. So, um, but for now, we just wanted to make sure that we ended up, that, that we're on the top of the list regardless of what they decide to do as far as the I-11 corridor.
If I may just also add to that point, uh, the community has put together a comprehensive, um, list of, um, safety concerns and needs as well when it gets to that point, that we, we would like to have some input on uh, uh, improvements and, uh, needed upgrades out all the way to the mine site itself.
You know, knowing that, knowing that you've got, that you guys have come to a consensus on that and you actually have a list. Uh, I think it'd be important when, when NDOT shows up here for their, uh, their annual meeting with us, if we couldn't give you guys a heads up and, you know, you don't have to necessarily drive all the way in here, but maybe zoom, use our Zoom capability and weigh in with your list at that point.
Mm-hmm. Happy to do that.
That's the one thing we have, we've, we've harangued on them quite a bit, but I think it's important to hear from the folks that actually use that road.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yep. Okay. Uh, I need a motion.
Is there, um,
Any additional comment?
I guess, we're good? All right. Um, I guess I'll make the motion that, uh, let me, let me take one look at this agenda item here.
It's 18.
I'd like to make a motion that, that we, as a commission, sign on to the letter, presented by the Orvata Community Citizens, uh, Community Citizens Group, uh, Thacker Pass Concerned Citizens with Lithium Nevada and that group. And that's it, I guess, that we sign the letter in conjunction with those, those others.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. We have additional discussion on the motion. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye?
Nay.
Uh, let the record show that Commissioner Haas voted nay. Okay, motion carries. So, um,
Do you want me to leave a copy of this? It will be modified for a signature line, but would you like what we have?
Mr. Chair, yeah, we actually have a copy of it already. We've, uh, we've added a, we will add a line for the commission to sign off on it as well. So.
There was some
Are you going to make, if you're going to make changes, we'll just hold off on it?
There was some minor edits done just before I came.
Okay.
So I would like you to have the most recent copy.
There's nothing significant you're changing, all right?
No, nothing significant, just some, um, etiquette.
Record, I want to make sure we do nothing.
You read the most, the, yes, there's just some edits to the CC lines to make sure we're, uh, in line there. But if you, if you don't need a copy, this has the signatures on it. I don't know if that matters to you, that already
If, if you don't mind, why don't you leave it with our county manager and, you have the changes, edits?
Yeah, this is everything but what would be changed for the county to sign on. So.
I'll take that.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks. Well, that's 9:54. We've got a 10 o'clock public hearing. Um, so I'm going to take five minutes and then we can do.
Mr. Chair, can I interrupt you just?
Yeah.
We've got Gina Rackley. Um, I, Gina, are you still on? It looks like you are, but I want to make sure.
I don't see Gina.
Yeah, she's online here, but I, she was out of cell service or something. Hang, hang on, she's talking. You might be muted, Gina. I just wanted to get her in because she was on the road type thing. So. But, well, let's go ahead and go with your
Okay, five minutes, we'll come back here at 10 o'clock sharp.
I'm, I'm, I'm on the call. Can you hear me okay?
Hang on Gina. Uh, they're going to take a quick break here. Are you in a good spot? Yeah, we're not here, we're here in the car Gina, but we're not hearing you.
Okay, can you hear me okay?
There you go.
No, okay.
So hang on one second, if you don't mind.
Good. Okay.
Oh, yeah.
He'll be spending the next week, week and a half, working up a design. And we're pretty sure that we secured a contractor.
Yeah, that's going to be Braemar.
Braemar?
Because they are both a Class A and B contractor. But there's, the only thing that's hitting on that, of course, is the design. Because no contractor is going to sign a contract without having a design for built. So he, in talking with Mike this morning, he said probably about a week and a half before you can have that designed, because they were just out there on Wednesday to do the measurements for the current foundation.
Okay. Any, any additional questions on any part of the commission?
So my, my understanding is then we are at the last stages of the design, formal design, and that the, we will have a timeline in terms of, you'll probably know something in terms of your contractor, then, by then. We'll have a timeline once we have him in place.
Correct.
All right. This is a public hearing. Do we have any public comment?
Assuming we're still under oath?
Yes. Mark Eivitz for the record?
Yeah, so I, I guess the, I would just ask that we make, make sure there's enough detail in there. Actually, for the benefit of Don and Keaton, that there's enough detail so the contractor is giving them what they need so they can give the commissioners what you need to kind of keep us on track. So.
Yeah.
You know, schedule, so you talked to him this morning, the day of the hearing seems like, out of respect for you guys, he should have given you guys some kind of documentation in preparation for today's hearing. So you're not, you know, coming in flat-footed, so to speak. So I would just ask that we put as much structure and detail behind it so the contractor knows what, what, what their expectations are. So they're in line with your expectations as the commission.
All right. Well, I, I tell you right now, we're going to, we're going to keep moving forward with this. And bottom line is, if you could keep our county manager in the loop as you have communication. And I need to, we need to schedule this for the next meeting to make sure that we are, that this timeline is squared away formally. We'll have one, one more meeting and hopefully this will be the last one we'll need to have with regard to this.
Mr. Chair, Dave Mindiola for the record. So what I'd like to have them do is continue to communicate with Levi in buildings. You guys have been talking a lot, so. And if you need me to be involved, I'm happy to do that. But I think you guys have been moving along on that front, so. And again, Levi, bring me in if you need to. Okay?
Okay. Thanks, thanks for coming in.
Wendy Maddox, for purpose of record, sorry, I'm going to interrupt. I just want to make sure if you do want to continue this and have another future hearing, my only concern is about notice. And so since we have everybody here today, if you were to schedule this for a future date a month from now, we wouldn't have to republish or renotice the parties if you set a date today.
Oh, if we set it today. Let's set it for the next commission meeting.
Which is? The 22nd.
22nd.
That's a Tuesday, just in case, everybody, there's a holiday on that Monday.
Okay. You think you can make, make it happen by the 22nd?
Yeah.
All right. Hey, let's, let's, let's set the 22nd, let's make sure this, let's get this done on 22nd.
Okay.
All right. Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
What are we going to get done on the 22nd? We're going to do another Set Two or another public hearing?
Right.
Now, my question's involved in this. The reports from Levi, the reports from the engineer.
Hey Levi, could you guys just hang on one second here? We have some more, maybe another question coming.
They're concerned in here about being able to do the engineering for a new home after the, the house is taken down. Why can't the house get taken down now? I mean, why, why are we just skipping over that? They said they want to take the house down and get rid of, of the nuisance problem there. Redesign the house. And if the, the structure underneath the house on the foundation hasn't been hurt, then they'll build a new house on that.
Correct.
Why aren't we requiring them to follow that through and please get it, the nuisance abated?
My understanding was is that the contractor was going to be involved with the demolition as well, correct?
Correct.
So, so that's, you know, that was what you expected within six to eight days, is I think what you said?
Would be the platform there would be contractor selection.
And it will be the first thing that comes down will be the, will be the building, correct?
Correct. That's what all, all of us going to say is Braemar is going to do both.
All right, right. That was my understanding anyhow, so. Are you comfortable, Levi, with it, the way that, what you're saying right now?
Absolutely.
Okay. Commissioner Haas, did you have anything additionally?
Yeah, I was confused on the letter that was given to us. You know, if they wanted, it sounded to me like they wanted to have the foundation clean so that they can redesign your home.
So they needed, well, they're paying the designer too. It's all, everything's based around the designer, Commissioner Haas.
And the main problem has been the nuisance all along. It's, you know, so the sooner that comes down, the better off we all are.
Yeah, that's who they felt the same way. Okay, so we'll have a, we'll have an update on, on what's left in this nuisance complaint then at the, at our next commission meeting and hopefully we'll be, we'll be done with it, hopefully.
So you, this Commissioner Hill, you haven't selected the contractor yet. They were just looking at Braemar as a potential with an A and a B license?
Yes.
Okay. And would you verify that they have an A-13 wrecking buildings license?
Yes, I can verify that.
Okay. Because they will need an A-13.
Sure. I'll look it up for you.
Okay.
Scored away then?
Yeah.
Okay. Any additional conversation, comments, questions? Okay, I think we need to, the action right now, Wendy, then, would be just for us to move it toward, to set the, an additional, additional meeting, public hearing then on the 22nd, right?
Yep, sounds to me that you're just continuing this public hearing to that date.
Right. Okay. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion that we continue the Set Two to item 16 in our agenda to our meeting on two, 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 two.
Would you, would you amend your motion just to include the Set Two language? Because it's going to be public hearing.
Continuance.
Yeah.
So read the whole Set Two here?
No, I just would ask that you amend your motion to remove Set Two. Okay.
What she said.
Okay. And it's two, 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 two.
It's on a Tuesday, too.
On the Tuesday. Wow. Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Any conver, any discussion on the motion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous? Okay.
Item seven.
Hey, item seven, Buildings and Grounds, Approval and Award of Ormasa Construction for Library ADA Update and Bathroom Renovation. This is consideration discussion, possible approval to accept a proposal from Ormasa Construction of Elko, Nevada for Humboldt County Library Bathroom Renovation and American Disabilities Act Upgrade to allow access to the bathrooms and conference room in the library in an amount not to exceed $281,868.
Good morning, Commissioners, Inokaitan, Buildings and Grounds. So this one, it's the final proposal we just get. We get only one since November 4th. That was the first one when we sent out for bids and then we didn't get anything. And then we get, we came back in front of the commissioner and in November 20 seconds, which we didn't have enough time to get all the Ormasa proposal. So Commissioner, they tabled that time to send this one out again. And then, once again, we didn't get no one except Ormasa. So, so we like to get approval to continue and then start this project at the library. Also, the price was increased from original, we budgeted for $200,000 and went up to $281,000 and something same, so. So if we keep waiting and waiting, prices is going to still continue going up.
So it went up $81,000 since the last time we met?
Yes.
No, that's not true.
No, 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 no.
No, 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 that's, that's not accurate. The first quote we got from them was over, was, we put aside 250, I think it was.
240, yeah.
Or 240.
Yeah.
And the only quote they've given us was 280 after the fact. And what we had to do here, because they came in after the deadline, we had to put it back out in notification, which we did in the paper, allowing anybody else to quote another price. Nobody came forward, so.
Okay.
So that's why we're back to this.
And then they came back and bid it at the same price?
Same price.
Same price. Nothing's changed.
That's good. I can live with that. Yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
I can't live with this.
Sorry, guys.
Okay. Gina just gave us a report. There's five categories we're down in. We're $8 million or thereabouts. I'm not sure what we ended up in over budget. So, and instead of just making these, letting, letting the contractors come in and say, it's going to cost $81,000 more to do this project. I can appreciate that because things have gone up. Has anybody looked at, at keeping this closer to $200,000? Do we have to do everything at once? I, I, you know, I mean, they're doing it to us every time we go out, you know, on, on these bids. Is, is they're coming back and saying, well, there's a lot more money involved in it now. Can we hold this to $200,000 and, and just do that amount? That's what we budgeted for.
Mr. Chair, Dave Mindiola for the record. My concern with that, Commissioner Haas, which I think it's a good point, is that you're going to have then two mobilizations. So long-term, when you look at it, you're going to mobilize a, a construction company to come out and do only part of the job. And then you're going to have to have them come back and mobilize them again. So the cost will only increase, in my mind. Commissioner Hill, you'd probably know that better than I, but two mobilizations usually means more money. I mean, if they're on site, it makes more sense that they get them both done. Because they're right next to each other, literally.
Yeah. This Commissioner Hill, a couple of thoughts go through my mind is, is maybe putting this off until the next budget cycle and try to budget for the full amount. That way we're not, as Commissioner Haas stated, you know, over budget by $81,000. My fear with that is that this company held to that price the second go-around. If we shut them down now and go wait for the next budget cycle, this, this realistically could look like $350,000 pretty easy. That would be my fear with, with turning it down at this point. Since they did come back and honor the, the 281 again. It, it is $81,000 over budget. I guess all I would ask is, you know, something's got to give to, to go over budget. We can't just make the money come out of thin air, so. You know, that would be my question to you, I guess, is what, what gives?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, Dave Mindiola, so, so technically we're not over budget. I mean, we'd only be over budget if we spent the maximum amount on every line item within the budget. And then that was over $40,000 or $80,000. But right now, I'm looking at their budget, I think the most recent, they're at about 30% of their budget and we're past halfway point, so they're well under budget. In addition to that, I think this was part of capital projects, which again was, we put aside between capital projects, building reserve, the court funds, about five and a half million dollars of which, we're probably only going to spend 1.5 of that. So we'll come nowhere near going over any budget, whether it comes out of capital projects or it comes out of the Buildings and Grounds budget. I would also mention too, with respect to Mr. Haas's response about Gina's report, one of the things that you, make sure you heard is, one of the things that happened during the 2020 year with COVID was truly a phenomenon in terms of Humboldt County, Landry County, Eureka County. We all came out unscathed, matter of fact, had record revenue years during that time. And primarily it was online shopping, even though everything else, a lot of things were down. So when you're seeing this, we're down by 3%, well, you don't want to be down. But the fact is, one of the last things she said, if you looked at over the last eight budget cycles, we were up, you know, as much as 5% to 6%. So we're still doing very, very well at this time, even with all the slowdown and all the things happening with getting construction jobs done, not having contractors, those kind of things. So I just, like I said, I just want to make sure, in my mind, this is just my opinion, we are not in bad shape. We're doing great. We're doing, we're very strong on our revenues, we continue to be. We do have the money set aside in capital projects for these kinds of things. It's cash in the bank. We have it right now. It's not on paper. And so if we wait to do these things, those costs just go up. Even if we weren't in this current situation, the costs are going to go up. So I would highly recommend, we've been trying to do this for a year. Right now, ADA patients cannot get to the bathrooms at the, at the library. So I really think that this is something that needs to be done and we just need to bite the bullet. And it's just, the costs are just going to go up. So that's my cons.
Okay, I, I think we all agree that it's, it's going to go up significantly. If, if the money exists in the budget to do it, I think it doesn't make sense for us to hold off on something and let, let the price go up, knowing what we know is in front of us right now. I, the other thing that hasn't been mentioned is that the, that project is not optional. It's, you know, it's an ADA project. We are out of compliance right now with ADA, ADA right now. So it, somewhere down the road, we've got to do this project. It's just a matter of what we're going to spend for it, so. Any additional comments?
I, I, I'm just concerned about costs going up and, and, you know, projects that, that we approved, the prices going up on them, but someday, you know, we, we keep saying, well, we'll, we'll take it from, from, from the budget. Because we're not going to get all these things built in a year, even though we budgeted $5 million. We're only going to spend a million. At some point, it may catch us, I mean, particularly with costs raising up like this. At some point, those projects that haven't been started yet are going to have to be looked at very carefully because the money's not going to be there if we keep taking money that we would have spent on that project to put into ongoing projects. But then again, I mean, it wasn't like we had a bunch of contractors fighting over this job. We got one bid and we came back with, you know, the same bid. And I, it's been said and I, I see it as well. If we don't accept this one, the next one could come in $350,000, like someone said. And I, I don't know if we can continue to postpone it. I, I think we postponed it quite, quite a while. I think we need to get it done, I guess, and just be careful going forward.
This Commissioner Hill, have we looked into any grant funding for maybe making up the, the difference on this? Since it is a, you know, an ADA project where maybe there would be some funding available out there for that?
Yeah, we've, we've looked at a few things, but it's very small amounts that are available. They'll get, you can find a $10,000 one or $20,000 and we don't mind going after those. But sometimes the paperwork to do those is massive.
Well, and maybe they're better reserved for, for other folks, too.
Yeah, well, and plus we're in the middle of looking at, you know, we've got, waiting on submittals for ARPA funding, for the wastewater treatment, for any number of other projects. And so we're just trying to keep our ammunition dry, I guess, and try to make sure that we don't overwhelm, you know, our grants coordinator for small things like that that take a lot of time, so.
So Dave, under the ARPA side of it, is, is there, is that, have we looked at the applicability of, of ARPA funds for something like that ADA compliance?
You know, I don't, I don't think we have. I think, if Gina, are you still on? She might be better or, or tipped in. I don't think those would apply to that, but I'm not sure.
I don't think they were in there. I had a word, but I'm not positive of it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I looked at that yesterday and I sure didn't see anything in there.
Okay. So the only other option would be some sort of standalone grant program and the, the grant amounts for something such as that is small enough to where it's not really?
Yeah, and there are like, some of the things that you see Jessica Anderson coming for us with.
Yeah.
It's a 3,000 here, 5,000 there. There's no infrastructure type stuff that we've been able to find.
Is there, though, I think the question that, that Commissioner Haas was asking, and I don't want to put any words in your mouth, but I got, what I got out of it was, was, you know, if, if we're over budget, you know, in other words, if it's 40,000 over budget, I'm just throwing that number out on the table. Is there, is there a process which you guys can go back to the program, project and say, okay, can we pull something out of here that represents $40,000? I mean, I, I guess we'd do that if it was our money. I mean, if it was, you know, if we had a project at home, we'd do that. I mean, is, 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 is that bare bones enough of a job that it's, it's, it is what it is?
Yeah.
I mean, those costs are, I mean, they dumbfounded me.
Yeah.
You could build a house for us.
Build a house for two.
And we just want to build a ramp.
Well, you know, it's got to come out on our discussions. Everything we've done lately is, is just expended money and more money and more money. So, you know, like you said, if you were doing this at home, it'd be different, same. So that's why I asked you, you know, how it was outlooked at. And if you can't do it, and the job has to stay complete, then it has to stay complete.
I guess what it boils down to then, gentlemen, is that, is the project priority enough to where you want to spend this money? Or, or is this something you want to walk away from? It's basically what's on the table. I, I say, I'll go back to my comment, it's an ADA project. I, it's, it's, you know, we're out of compliance for ADA with regard to that building. You know, we, you, we got to do something. I mean, we're, we'll, we'll end up, we'll end up in a courtroom if we don't, so. It's not like it's, it's, it's a, it's a wish item, it's a, it's a need item. But I do agree with everybody's that $280,000 is, I, I have a hard time understanding where that, how you can come to that number. In terms of what you can build, like you say, you can build one hell of a house for $280,000.
You used to be able to.
Yeah, yeah.
Not sure in the floor.
Yeah. Anyway, that, what's on, what's on the table is a, are we going to move forward with this, this construction project or not? And it's. Yep.
Commissioner Hill, again, and it's more than just a, I'm trying to remember, it's not in our, our Commissioner packet exactly. I don't think the, the bid was not in there, but it's more than just a ramp, isn't it, redoing the whole bathroom?
It's the whole bathrooms, men's and women's bathrooms. Turning them into ADA. Make them compliant.
Yeah.
So there is pretty significant construction.
Two bathrooms. Two bathrooms.
Yeah.
Yeah.
A ramp.
Yeah.
Two bathrooms, the ramps, the, all the stuff to get into the building and to be able to use the facilities. And probably some electrical plumbing, HVAC rerouting, everything's. Little more than a ramp.
Right. All right. I think that's fair to, to say. Still looking for, still looking for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I, I would make a motion that we approve Ormasa Construction's proposal for Humboldt County Library Bathroom Renovation and ADA Compliance Project in Amount Not to Exceed $281,868, pending approval by the District Attorney's Office.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Any additional motion or comments on the motion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, can we go back to expenditures real quick so we can get the Controller's Office working on getting all everybody paid?
We have item five, Approval Expenditures, January 18th through February 7th, 2022. Everybody had a chance to look and sign those?
I haven't signed them yet.
Okay. Coming at you for a moment, so.
Yeah, I haven't signed them, but I've looked at them.
Okay. If you, are you comfortable?
I am.
Right now? Need a motion in on that?
Motion to approve the expenditures for Humboldt County, January 18th, 2022 through February 7th, 2022, as presented.
Motion on the floor, discussion on the motion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous.
Then we'll go to eight, item eight.
Okay, we're going to move to item eight, Creative Construction and Landscape Snow Removal Agreement. Consideration discussion, possible approval of agreement with Creative Construction Landscape LLC to provide snow removal services for Humboldt County in an amount not to exceed $20,000 and to expire April 30th, 2024. At the January 3rd, 2022 commission meeting, it was agreed to extend the current contract with Creative Construction and Landscape to February 7th, 2022 and return with a new two-year agreement. And this just follows that instruction.
Yeah, so Mr. Chair, so just quick reminder, so we, we did halt on this one. We extended the current agreement that was in place until today just so that we would have time to add several things to the contract that the commission wanted. So we have done that. And, and then that's been checked by Creative Construction, Mr. Quilisi, excuse me, as well as the District Attorney's Office. And so we are good to move forward on that one. And we just made it a two-year agreement rather than a one.
Right. I think that was the instruction for it.
Correct.
Have any, any questions anybody had on that?
This Commissioner Hill, the, the not to exceed is 20,000 for the two years or is it 20,000 per year?
For the two years.
Okay.
Yep.
No, I looked it all over. I, I don't see any, any issues. You know, it did go up by $80, which is completely expected, the way things are. I don't even, actually, I think that's probably a fairly conservative increase, honestly, for the county. To only go up $80, I, I think that's, that all looks good to me.
I have a question. There was a number of recommendations, and I don't remember what they all were to, to add to that contract. One of them was the timing of when the contract was to be renewed. Were all those recommendations included in the new contract and were they accepted by the other party?
Yeah, I believe it ends in April now.
Yeah, so it, yeah, it's a two-year agreement. It'll end in April of 2023. And then that way it gives us the entire summer to put out another bid and come back in the fall before the snow flies again, we hope. Also on that was a request to add some language around moving those large piles of snow, if you recall. And that is in the agreement. And then also there was a, a little bit of language about deicing, that they would be available to deice if, if the county wanted them to. And so that was included in there as well. And I think that was, that was pretty much it.
The only thing, I, I did see the removal, there is cost in there for removal.
For the piles?
Yes, there, there is cost.
Additional cost for that.
I guess just be aware that, you know, that if we do decide as a commission to move that snow, it, it's going to be costly. It's, it's not going to be, it's going to be costly and as it should be, because it is, it is, it's a process.
I don't think that was any change, because I remember reading the original contract said the same.
Yeah. Only thing I didn't see is on the salting, is that, how is that going to be?
Well, I think he kind of included it on that deicing. It, it was just some language saying that they are available to do that. He didn't put pricing to it. He said that he would just negotiate that based on the cost of materials and whatever at that time to do so.
Yeah, would that have a bearing on the not to exceed number then?
Well, it would still be part of that not to exceed, so it would all be included. So if the cost of salt or any other, you know.
We're still holding $2,000 a year.
Yeah, and we're at the mercy of, of the way, who knows? You know, we have another December, which.
Right, and keep in mind too also that this last year, we had building, or the road department actually moved the snow. And so I think that should still be our first option. But if they're too busy and they're out doing roads, then we've got a backup. That was really the intent behind it.
I agree. I think it would be good to ask, I mean, ask Don first, I guess, if he had the time. If they do, then that would save the county some money.
So we're going to, I think the biggest problem with the piles of snow, they were out there on the street. Haven't got enough room to put the snow. Haven't got enough room to put the snow unless it gets, you know, a lot more than they did this year. And just make a plan as to what, where he is to put it on our property so we don't have a problem with it.
Also, this is Commissioner Hill again. I think we talked about that last time, and with that building being gone, I think we can shove a lot of snow into that lot and not.
Yes, Commissioner, so yeah, our plan is to move all that snow in our parking lot and that with the empty spaces right now. When, when we turn up building down.
Yeah.
Yes, that's, that's.
I think that was the only question, you know, the city had on it was that.
Only issue I can see there and something you can look at is when it melts, the runoff from, and the erosion from that just being a dirt parking lot, so you might want to consider that because we might be cleaning out storm drains.
I think there was a, a question that was supposed to go to the DA on the contract, whether there was any problems with it being so close to the people that work here. Did that ever get?
I'll let.
This is Wendy Maddox. I think I addressed that in the last meeting. My recommendation would be that anybody that is somehow has any kind of a conflict of interest perhaps would abstain from being involved in this process, whether it's sending out bids, posting any kind of the notice in the paper or anything that's required by code, as well as being involved in looking at the contract or anything like that. In addition, I've also recommended that if there's any kind of a conflict of interest kind of scenario between an employee and a vendor or contractor, that we really do our due diligence. And my recommendation would be that we get multiple bids from other people, even though this is not necessarily required because the amount is less than fifty thousand dollars. So it's not required that we get two quotes, and since it's not over a hundred thousand, it's not required that we go out to bid according to code. But my recommendation would be that we get quotes as well as go out to bid if we can, just to avoid any appearance of impropriety. Thank you.
The only question I had on that is you've got a manager and an assistant manager. Manager's gone. We need something that is, you know, it's snowed, it's done this, it's done that. Contractor's asking. You would have to go to the assistant manager. Or do we have some other way of doing that? I mean, you know, she has addressed the, the fact that he hasn't touched anything in the contract. He hasn't done any bids. He hasn't done that. I can accept that and appreciate that. But I can also see down the road, there's possibilities and problems.
I just have a comment.
He deals with us for a start anyway.
Yeah.
He deals with us. The contract that deals with us directly. So if the manager was away, he'd be dealing with us and we can deal with the manager anyway.
Yeah, and I'm always a phone call away. I don't ever leave my job to be really honest with you.
This is Commissioner Hill. I just have a comment too. And this, this contract's written in such a way, basically, it's a, it's, it's a sign, you know, Dave signs it or the chairman signs it, and it's kind of an at-will type deal. If it snows, they respond. They, you know, they don't really need a lot of input from the county. It's, it's kind of a, you know, it's all stated there, the amount of snow, and they respond, and, and there's not a lot of interaction back and forth after the contract's signed.
No.
I don't see.
Between these guys.
The, the bills go into, to another department, the.
Correct.
I, I don't see an issue.
Without any evidence of any impropriety in terms of how the contract was, was let and how it was, and how it was negotiated, and certainly with, you know, the, the capability in place for our, our building department to deal with the contractor on one-to-one basis to implement the contract, I don't see any issues at all with it. Okay, with that, do we have any additional comments? Motion?
Motion. I make a motion to approve building ground department's request as presented, tendered to a new agreement with Creative Construction and Landscaping LLC for snow removal services from the parking lots of properties owned by Humboldt County for the next two years in an amount not to exceed twenty thousand dollars.
Okay, motion on the floor, discussion on the motion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Uh, any against?
Nay.
Okay, let the record show Commissioner Haas is a no. Motion carries. Okay, we're going to move on to item ten.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, guys.
Move to item ten, Quarterly Financial Investment Report for Period Ending twelve thirty one. Consideration, discussion, possible action to accept the third quarter fiscal year twenty twenty one, twenty two investment report from Humboldt County Treasurer, Ronald Luckenberry.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Good morning, Commissioners. Ronald Luckenberry, Humboldt County Treasurer. I wish there was better news to report on the investment front for the last quarter. It's just we're still, we were still in that zero rate environment at that time. Interest revenue was still at fifty one thousand one hundred and ninety seven dollars and ninety eight cents for the quarter, which is consistent with the first quarter of fiscal year twenty two, but down slightly from the same time last year. As I'm sure you're aware, inflation is higher than it has been in thirty years, so we're going to have to see a really high rate increase to sort of offset that inflation anyway, so. At the end of twenty twenty one, it was at four point nine percent, which is much higher than the target rate of two percent that they were talking about last year. The Fed's going to have no choice but to begin raising rates and reducing its balance sheet, which is good news. Hopefully, that'll open up the market for other investors. There's so much cash out there trying to find a place to invest in. As the Fed stops pulling all those investments in, it'll open it up to the rest of us. Currently, the market is pricing in three rate hikes for twenty twenty two. Some reports are calling for five. We've even seen as many as seven. Let's hope that that doesn't happen. We want the rates to come up, just not too quickly. We're still keeping our duration pretty low so that we can take advantage of those rates once they start coming up. And it's still a balancing act between investing that money and our earnings credit rating with the bank to offset those bank fees. We did well this year. We are, we're only paying a hundred and twenty seven dollars and fifty four cents in fees, which is much better than the sixty thousand last year. But as rates start to come back up, we'll have to keep an eye on, you know, where it's best to put our money. We don't want to leave anything on the table, so we'll look at that earnings credit versus investment income as it, as it comes through. We'll be keeping an eye on that. As far as income and expenses go, our income was down a little bit this quarter compared to last year, but a large part of that is attributable to the timing of when large, large property tax payments were made. For example, last year, Nevada Gold Mines paid their taxes in one payment, whereas this year they've elected to pay it in installments. And we also had a large mortgage file payment that generally we receive in December, but we didn't receive it until January this year with that first installment date being a little later in the month of January. So that sort of impacts that quarter's revenues. Expenses were also down from the same time last year, which is good news. If the revenue's down, you want the expenses down too, but that's mostly, I think, because we were paying out so much in CARES funds. And when I pull those expenditures in, it includes those. One of the questions that the board had during my last report was in regard to diesel tax. Of the one million two hundred thirty two dollars, five hundred, excuse me, two hundred thirty two thousand five hundred seventy two dollars and sixty four cents that we collected for gas tax this quarter, diesel tax accounted for about thirty five percent of that four hundred twenty four thousand three hundred seventy dollars and twenty cents, and that was just for that quarter. But since the inception of the diesel tax last July, we've collected one million three hundred seventy nine thousand six hundred seventy four dollars and twenty six cents. That's the total collected, and that is only through November of twenty twenty one, from July to November, because we have that two-month lag in what we collect.
So, Rona, do we, do we collect the whole sum or does NDOT pull that ten percent off the top?
So they, they pulled theirs before they give it to us. I don't know if you remember in my last report, we talked about the true-up.
Right.
Where what they didn't give out in appeal, what appeals or refunds of that, that they gave to us. And I think it was a considerable amount. I'm trying to remember. I think it was a couple hundred thousand dollars that they gave back to us, if not four.
Right, that was based on the, that was based on that calculation.
Yes.
People that drive straight through.
Yeah, and we'll see that again probably when they give us June's installment for that first.
So with the true-up, and I'm, this is just real rough, quick math in my head, we're looking at about a million eight to the county, coming back to the county annually.
It looks like we're on track for that.
Yeah, so that's about eight hundred thousand over what we anticipated when this thing came down. So that's going to make, that's going to true up the, the.
The drug stop that you didn't have then.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Yeah, and the rest, the little rest area pull out things.
But half of that is the city's, goes into RTC.
It's all RTC.
Yeah.
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 But it offsets what we spend on our, from our.
Yeah.
Yes.
But, but in reality, if it's a million eight, we'd have nine hundred thousand city to spend, and city would have a nine hundred thousand.
Right, but the, the number they gave us initially though, when, when NDOT came back, was just shy of a million dollars, remember? And we were thinking, and that was total across Humboldt County.
Yes.
Yeah.
So it's, it's done what it's.
That was the original.
Part was I was, I was worried we were going to see this massive jump in the cost of diesel, and it really didn't happen.
No.
Didn't occur.
You take, and drive eighty, and we're still the lowest in, in, on eighty. Us and Battle Mountain, and then Elk was a lot higher.
Jumps up and.
Goes up.
Yeah.
Dry patch is sometimes cheaper.
Is it?
Is it? So anyway, it's, it didn't occur what we thought was going to happen, which is good news. I was glad to see that happen.
Yes. So I, I just wanted to add that the, we'll start seeing the corrective action from the Fed coming in March where they're going to ease. They're already starting to, to do some quantitative easing, but the rates and things will start changing. Probably March is the first time they're going to call for that, so we may have one more, you know, the first, or the next quarterly report is probably going to be very similar to this, but then we'll hopefully start seeing some changes in.
That was my question. So as you're, as we're seeing the rate increases happen, they're promising four this year, at least four. If that, as that happened, are we going to see an index similar to that coming as far as our return on investment or?
Well, at first, what you'll probably see as an overall value of the portfolio will actually probably come down as the rates go up, so we don't, we don't, that's why we don't want them to go up too quickly, right? Because what we currently are holding is going to be worth less. Granted, that's just a loss on paper, so to speak. We're still earning all that interest or income that we have out there. That's why we would like to see it sort of spread out a little more so this dive is not as deep and starts to climb back up, probably closer to the end of the year, I would say. End of the calendar year, not even fiscal.
Which could throw the brakes on the economy as well.
Yeah, yeah. It'll be interesting to see how they, maybe took a little too long to take some corrective action and see what that's.
We won't see an awful lot happen until after the election and then hang on.
Yeah, it could get fun.
Any other questions for Rona? Thank you for coming. Thanks for waiting for us.
Oh, absolutely. Thank you. Have a good day.
Thanks, Rona.
Okay, and item eleven. Assessor's request to amend previously approved contract with pictometry. Consideration, discussion, possible action to approve an amendment to the previous approved contract pictometry to add a solar plant to our flight for the upcoming year. This will be the last year the assessor will add this solar plant to flights. Going forward, it will be included on the Golconda Valmy area every five years. Previous contract for this upcoming year was approved at two hundred and, two hundred and three thousand seven seventy four sixty eight. This amendment will increase the cost an additional thirty eight hundred ninety six dollars and sixty four cents for a total not to exceed two oh seven six seventy one thirty two.
Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, Chairman French. Andy Heiser, Humboldt County Assessor. Uh, excuse me. So yes, I am asking for an additional, just under thirty nine hundred dollars for our upcoming flight. This is my most expensive flight. I know when we, when I presented this five-year contract three years ago, Commissioner Cherry had some questions on this flight. It is a large amount. It basically covers Orvada, all the rurals, so Orvada, Kings River, McDermott, Paradise Valley, Denial, and the outer lying areas of those towns. So it's about four hundred. Pictometry uses sectors. It's a section essentially, so six hundred and forty acres. This flight is four hundred and fifty eight sections, which is just about three hundred thousand acres. Standard flights, just comparison, Grass Valley, Rose Creek area is about fifty sections. So this is our biggest flight. It costs the most money. I'm seeing, seeing by these flights, the savings in fuel and maintenance, we're getting a lot more done. We're using these imagery captures to find areas that we need to visit instead of just driving around hoping we can find improvements. Any questions?
I have none. I think it's been a, been a good program. Any, any questions for Andy?
Do they use a black helicopter when they fly over?
Yes, they do. No. They, they, they actually stay very high. You don't even, half the time, know they're, they're flying. They're about twenty thousand feet up with getting better and better every year, so.
Any, any questions? Motion?
Make a motion to approve the amended contract between Humboldt County and Pictometry International Corp. To incorporate the solar plant into this year's imagery capture. To increase our previously approved amount by three thousand eight hundred ninety six dollars sixty four cents to a total amount of two hundred seven thousand six hundred seventy one dollars and thirty two cents.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, discussion on that motion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous.
Thanks. Have a great day.
Thanks.
Okay, Public Works Department, request to auction equipment. Consideration, discussion, possible action, dispose of eleven county vehicles and a trailer as listed in attached staff report by Public Auction pursuant to NRS three three two point one eight five. As said, property is no longer in public use and in the best interest of the county. All items should be auctioned off to the highest bidder.
Good morning again, Commissioners. Don Kalkowski, Humboldt County Public Works. So this is just a list that we have right now. We're probably going to add to this. We've got some other, some other items that we've acquired from like NDOT and, and elsewhere that we have no use for, but we'll, I'll bring that to you later. What we have right now is just some equipment, vehicles that are not being used. Some of them are beyond, beyond repair. I know the ones that are, you know, are specifically for the road department, they're just, it's not worth fixing them. It's just costing way too much money to keep these things going. So that's, that's where we're at. We did have a couple of vehicles that we offered to others, and we've gotten, we've, we've reallocated one of those right now, and we still have one more up there that's in fairly decent shape. It's a car. It's an Impala. It's an old police sheriff rig. But other than that.
Okay.
Questions?
I have none. This is, this is pretty routine. Any questions for Don? Any motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the sale and transfer of county surplus inventory as presented. And do I need to say that no longer, because it has been determined that it no longer is of service.
No longer of public use and in the best interest of the county.
Okay, that, that's what I meant.
We have a motion on the floor, discussion on the motion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? I just have it. Item B is a presentation by Humboldt County Public Works Director, Don, to update the board on road projects from Humboldt County.
Good morning again, Don Kalkowski, Humboldt County Public Works. So the last couple of weeks, we've been working on Cane Springs Road and River Ranch out in the Orvada area. We've been adding some materials to those roads from our sources that we have. We've also been working on Jungle Road and Bottle Creek, as well as Grass Valley and Pumpernickel, just trying to keep everything up. We're, we're still down employees. So we've had, typically, we have two crews here locally in town. We don't have that. We don't have that anymore due to losing, losing people. So the, my assistant, Daniel, has been out blading roads and actually watering at times for himself. He's not making a lot of progress, but he's making a presence and stopping some of the phone calls at the, you know, right now. But on side note, we do have two new hires on. So we've got them on. One started two weeks, two, maybe three weeks ago. One started today. So we're getting those two up to speed and then hopefully that'll, that'll help us. And we still have, we have one more coming in March, hopefully, still. And then still got one open that was Daniel's and just haven't gotten there yet to ask you guys for attrition. The one thing that's really affecting us lately is parts availability and the cost of these things. It is, it is really tying our hands in the shop fixing stuff, just trying to get parts anymore. For the light duty vehicles, we've been. Mike's been, you know, looking all over the web and some of the times, the only place we can find some of these things is like eBay. And it's really hard to justify buying from eBay on some of this stuff. But if it comes down to it, that's what we'll do. We're using vendors that we've never used before just to get parts here anymore. You know, if they have it, we're jumping on it. And, you know, Gina's been great helping us out with the credit card and utilizing that for these vendors that we don't have accounts with. Some of them, if we're, if we're going to possibly start using them on a consistent basis, we're trying to set up accounts. So there's no tax and, and whatnot on these. But some of them, it's, it's just impossible. It's just the, the way it is, so. That's really all I got for you guys.
You know, I'm finding in my business too, it's hard to get parts. But on top of that, the cost of freight's doubled too. Sometimes the freight's more than the part.
Yeah, it's, it's crazy. Kind of go with that, the motor grader we ordered in July. I was informed on Friday that it's now in Sparks. So it's at eight months later.
It might have some.
We still have a couple of pieces out. We have a skid steer out and two, two pickups that are out. And I've been pushing these guys trying to give me some definitive dates because I want them before June thirtieth. But I'm not sure anymore.
How, Commissioner Hill? In your upcoming budget, parts, I mean, parts, it's really hard for you to budget for that stuff. But I, I concur with, with Commissioner Cherry and yourself, you know. Parts are ridiculous. I just paid a hundred dollars for a small block Chevy exhaust O-ring. That used to be seventeen dollars, but same deal, couldn't find it. Had to go to an alternative source and they know that, so they, they gouge you, I guess, at some point. It's.
It's, it's tough. We're going to have to, and I've just started looking at. I've been going through some of my easier budgets, you know, the GIDs and stuff first. I haven't really dove into the road budget, other than machinery, just trying to get an eye, you know, idea of what we want to pursue this year. We're going to have to look at some reports and, and see where we're at, like in the last three months and see how much that increase is. And, and just maybe possibly carry that over, you know, as a, as a whole for the next year and just see if that. See if that makes it. It's, you just need a big dartboard.
Yeah, there's not a whole lot we're going to do about it.
It's, it's tough. I know Darren was complaining because he ordered fifty filters from our filter rep. Three weeks ago, and he's gotten twelve of those filters in. So we're, right now, we're, he's kind of complaining because we're running out of room. But I told him, I said, if you can get the parts, get them here so we have them on the shelf. So we're, right now, we're, I've ordered some more shelving and we're going to put some more shelving upstairs where we didn't have a lot. And we're, we're just, we're running out of room because we've never had to keep this much stuff on hand at all times. And, yeah, it's just a whole different animal.
I've noticed, like, the gravel pit down there on South Valley Road is, the piles, it's gone. When will you start crushing again?
That just went out to bid.
Oh.
So that one, that one went out and then tonight, one other thing went out. Oh, our dust control program went out to bid. So those are out to bid and those should open here in the next couple of weeks.
Do you know if, if, maybe this is a Gina call, but are you going to be using some of that diesel tax to be able to, to spend on the crushing? And the dust control and that stuff?
So typically, we use that. We, we have the, we have the item in our RTC fund for materials purchases. But we've been using, utilizing that for our commercial vendors. We have our special projects bid item in our regular road budget that we've kind of been, we've been using the crushing. Or in the past, using for the, the crushing projects that we have.
Chair?
Yes.
Don, hate to bring this up, but I got to. Soldier Meadows. That's become a problem. I mean, it's been a problem before you had this job. It's always been a problem for Humboldt County. But I had, somebody stopped by my house the other day and, and tell me that they're having trouble getting propane deliveries now because the road's so bad. And I'm wondering if that isn't something that we just got to bite the bullet and, and. Taking a lot of amount of time and steal a crew somewhere and get that, get that done. I mean, it's not something we have to do every year, but if it's getting that bad.
So this is something actually Wendy and I have kind of been working on a little bit on the side. But so Soldier Meadows, we did have an agreement. I think I've mentioned it to you guys with, with BLM. That agreement has expired. BLM would maybe go in there once a year and do some blading work to get that done. We're now looking ourselves to do that. It is a minor classified road, which per the NRS, doesn't require any maintenance. Doesn't require us to do a specific maintenance program on that. So. That's great, however, it doesn't help the people that live out there. So we are looking, right now, I've got the Orvada crew and the Denio crew. They're both working together to get some stuff done in Orvada. The trade-off there is once Orvada gets all their stuff tied up and buttoned up, the Orvada crew is going to go over to Denio. And one of the things we're going to look at trying to do is trying to get over to Soldier Meadows to get some, get some stuff done. It's just, it, it's a really difficult road to deal with because it is so far over there.
I don't know. I've got one more thing.
Okay, go ahead.
When I was visiting, and I'm sure you visited with the individual, John Young before. He told me that his bosses at Barter Ranches, they would be interested in doing some sort of an MOU with the county. And they have a grader and they, they would be interested in proceeding that way. But his bosses told him not to touch the road without something like that in place. So that might be something that would work.
And that's the first I've heard of that. The other problem with that road is we only, we only have the Humboldt County portion. The lower portion, which is Pershing, I don't think it runs into Washoe, but Washoe used to maintain it. The Pershing County portion, Pershing doesn't maintain anymore. Talking with those guys, they said they haven't touched it in over twenty years. So even if we do do something on our portion, that Pershing County portion is still, we're not touching it unless BLM. From what I understand, Pershing County turned that back over to BLM. Just got rid of the, the agreement that they had with, with BLM. I have met with BLM, talked with them, and one of the things that. I kind, I, I understood was if that road was theirs, they could theoretically. Get more funding to do the road, to, to maintain the road. Because right now, or how it was in the past with the agreement that we had, it was our road, however, they were maintaining it. So it was really hard for them to get the funding for it. So if you think how that, how the government works, if it's their road, they should be able to get the funding for it. So that's, that's their thoughts behind it. So Wendy and I have kind of been talking about what would it take to possibly get rid of that agreement that we have there? Turn that whole thing back over to BLM and let them handle it with their funds, with their crews. And it might be more beneficial for the property owners out there. I mean, they might have it maintained on a more consistent basis that way. So it's, it's just.
Since you've been doing this job, have, have you ever had a, a meeting or an MOU review between the feds and us having to do with our roads? We used to sit down with them periodically and, and we would do exactly what you're talking about. You take this one, we'll take this one. Your grader's, your grader's closer to this road than ours is. We used, that was when we, we contracted or contract, we agreed to maintain some of the roads that went into. One I remember is that piece of road that came in off of, off of Knott Creek Road and went up, went up the hill toward Knott Creek Reservoir. And they, Humboldt County did that several times because, and they did it as a trade for some of the work they did on Soldier Meadows. And we even had the refuge over there working on that, on Soldier Meadows Road, the Sheldon Refuge. Because it benefited them to have that road open as well. The other thing that hasn't come up in this conversation that it did before had to do with Summit Lake Indians. And, you know, they, they haven't been making much racket right now about not having access into the reservation. But they probably will have as much success getting, cracking that federal money open as anybody.
Right.
So it, and we used to sit down annually and have a, and have a, a sit-down in terms of what we're, you know, who is going to provide what. And, and it seems like that's been missing for quite a while. Nothing on you, I mean.
Right, yeah, and that's, obviously, I wasn't aware of that. However, I do, I do sit down with BLM. You know, every so often, every few months, you know, when these things come up and I have an open dialogue with them, they, I email and call them quite often. And we talk about things and, and how things, you know, would help each other for that. So.
Yeah.
But we haven't had anything official with the commissioners and everybody sitting down, so.
That might be something, Dave, that we want to put on one of our, one of our coordination meetings with BLM. It seems like that's just, that's what's missing. We've got lots of assets out there. We just, everybody's kind of looking at one another to who the hell is going to take Soldier Meadows?
Well, and I, and I honestly believe that's kind of the reason why, you know, we had the MOU with BLM in the first place. You know, we took the Greeley Crossing Road because we have a crew there.
Right.
So we can get that. You know, if we were doing Soldier Meadows, we have to pull a crew, go over there and do that, and it just takes away. So. At, at any rate, BLM was going to have to pull a crew, no matter which road they did. So let's let them do Soldier and we'll, we'll do this one. And it worked out pretty well in the past. However, more recently, within the last couple of years since I've been here, they've been having a hard time keep, being able to pull a crew and expend the monies to maintain that road.
Yeah.
So.
There's nothing, you know, via, when they, when they, when the Washoe County crew out of Via used to do it, they made the most sense because they were closest to it. But I'm told now that they, that Washoe County doesn't use, doesn't have, it doesn't even have a crew in Via anymore.
Well, I talked with the crew in Gerlock and the supervisor there, and he said they don't, they haven't done it in years. So they don't, they don't have any dog in the fight for that. So. So if you were to pursue giving it back to the BLM and then letting the BLM do it, it's, that's pretty obvious to me that it might.
BLM might get out there in the next three or four years, the way they work usually.
Well, I, I think if it was theirs, they could, they could set something up budgetarily where it's an annual.
So two or three years, because they wouldn't have it in their budgets going forward.
Right.
So the road's bad enough now that people are having trouble getting propane gas in there so they can do. Wouldn't it, wouldn't it be worth looking at, at an MOU with, with the property owner there to see what they had in mind and what, what the cost would be?
Yeah, it could, absolutely, absolutely.
And also involve the feds on that, BLM as well?
Now, I have another note. My son has gone up there when he's chuckle hunting and I've asked him, you know, every time, you know, how's the road? And he says, it's rough, you know, it's a backcountry Nevada road, you know, typical. Can you get through? Absolutely. But I can understand, you know, hauling a full propane truck up through there would be a little bit difficult. And I'm sure the drivers would be a little bit tentative. Yeah.
So if BLM takes it, it doesn't affect the RS two-four-seven-seven status, does it?
No. No, it'd still be, it'd still be there. It'd still be a viable road access.
Another comment, I guess, question is, the commission usually has a monthly meeting with BLM. Would, would it be any advantage to have? And I remember Ben used to do it when we had him. He'd sit in on those meetings and always had some, something.
Yeah, we've still been having them. I just maybe give you a heads up on the next.
I was unaware of that, so, yeah.
Yeah, we talk about other stuff, but this one, I think it'd be good to have you there for that one.
Absolutely, absolutely. I'll give you my opinions all day long.
What BLM stands for. Bureau of Lots of Meetings.
Okay.
Okay, any, any additional comments? Okay, thanks, Don.
All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, item thirteen. Sheriff's request for purchase parts, waive the attrition policy and detention center physician agreement. Start with A, which is request to purchase console parts for the Humboldt County Dispatch and amount not to exceed thirty-two thousand three twenty-four.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. So I guess the first item we have is a request to purchase console parts for Humboldt County Dispatch. An amount not to exceed thirty-two thousand three hundred and twenty-four dollars and eighty-nine cents. I don't know if you guys remember, but during the budget hearings, we actually had this amount up to about a hundred and fifty thousand. Because we thought we were going to have to replace all the, what I'm going to call the desk or the tables that the dispatch puts all their equipment on. And they, they raise and lower so that the dispatchers who work extended hours, see, doing our emergency dispatch. Have a, a desk that adjusts appropriately to them. So, but we were able to find another option and we put in, into the request, our budget, thirty thousand even. But since then, just like everything else, they, we did see a increase in the price for the replacement parts. So now we're requesting this, so thirty thousand dollars is, was put in our budget. We are requesting for the expenditure of thirty-two thousand three hundred and twenty-four dollars and eighty-nine cents. And we feel that we, you know, can cut back in cer- certain areas in our current budget where. Where we could take the hit within our own budget. We're not asking for the additional twenty-three thousand, twenty-three hundred to fulfill this. This needing, need, very needed repair for our, our tables or desks that we have there.
Dude, how many desks are we, we're going to replace those or what's?
So, good morning, Under Sheriff Kevin Malone for the record. No, we're not replacing the consoles or the desks themselves. We're replacing the internal parts of them that raise, lower and things like that. Like Sheriff said, previously, we were going to replace all of them. Excuse me, and that was five consoles altogether for about a hundred and fifty thousand. Were able to do just the internal parts and basically rebuild these to make them, I mean, just like new, basically, for the thirty-two thousand.
No, I like it. Instead of spending a hundred and fifty, we're going to spend thirty-two. We need to do more of that. We need to do more of that.
We try.
Okay, any additional questions, Commissioners?
I, I think, I think it's a good idea, and I have to say that my time on the commission, Sheriff's come before us, he's usually tries hard to stay within his budget, so if he knows he can get the $2,300 out of his budget somewhere else, then that's fine.
Yep, agreed. Have a motion?
Yeah, I'd make a motion that we allow the Sheriff Department to purchase the console parts for Humboldt County Dispatch in an amount not to exceed $32,324.89.
Okay, we have motion on the floor. Discussion on the motion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Okay, move on to item B, Request to Waive the Attrition Policy for the Following Positions. 911 Operator Position became available December 20th, and Detention Deputy Position as anticipated to be vacant in the next 30 to 60 days due to a transfer to the Patrol Division. This is part of the 2021-22 FY Budget. Go ahead.
All right, thank you. So the first, first position would be the 911 Operator Dispatcher. This position became available on December 20th, as you said, and we're requesting to move forward and request the waiver of attrition so we can begin the hiring process for this individual. Our, you know, we are very understaffed right now in dispatch, although we are getting people hired. It's critical that, this is a critical need position and it's an emergency need, public safety position that we have here. We, we undergo some, some critical staff shortages sometimes, and it just takes us to fill all those positions, just to fulfill our obligations to the county, to the people, to make sure we have all those dispatch, dispatchers in place at, at all times to the best of our ability.
Yep. Do we have any, any questions or concerns? That item? I need a motion in.
I'll make a motion that we approve the waiver of attrition for the sheriff to, for the 911 oper, 911 Operator and Dispatch Position that became, that will become available December 20th, 2021, or did become available, I guess.
Okay, do you want to include the, the other one, the vacant, the vacant Position Deputy Detention?
Yes.
Get both of them on the, on this attrition policy, so.
Yes, I'll do that too, as stated, yeah.
Okay. So we have a motion on the floor to waive the attrition policy for the 911 Operator that was, been vacant since December 20th, and the Detention Deputy Position as anticipated to be vacant in the next 30 to 60 days. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Okay, and we'll go on to item C, Agreement Between Humboldt County Political Subdivision of the State of Nevada and Dr. Charles Stringham to Provide Physician Services in an Amount Not to Exceed $2,000 Per Month for an Estimated Two to Three Month Time Period at the Adult Detention Facility until a New Agreement can be completed by Humboldt General Hospital. Didn't we deal with that before?
No, that was his overall, that was his public health official. We, we brought it up once before.
Dave, when we, when this came before us before, it was going to go back to the hospital.
Yeah, the hospital was going to do it.
Yeah, that's still the case, I think.
Yes, we can discuss.
Yeah, if you want to discuss that, that's still the case, but that hasn't happened yet, so they need help now. That's the bottom line, I think.
So Humboldt County Sheriff Mike Allen for the record. So just to go back some time, the historical information on this, we did have Dr. Grant assisting us in the jail for a considerable amount of time. She then retired or discontinued her contract, her services to the jail. We are obligated by law to ensure that the, these inmates do, do, are afforded medical attention while they're in there. So Dr. Stringham did, was seeing these, our inmates for a short period of time, I don't know how long he was, but then he discontinued his service. Captain Liniger did an excellent job when the COVID hit, was able to find some grant money for some, for a nurse to do our medical evaluations or treatments that they can receive in the jail. And as a result, we signed an agreement with Humboldt General Hospital, but as you guys are aware, they had a change of administration. When they had a change of administration, they reviewed some of their contracts or all of their contracts, I'm not sure, but they did review our contract, and they felt that they were not in compliance with their own policies or, or contract liabilities in there, and they thought there was a significant amount of liability on their end for being in this agreement with us to, to oversee a nurse. So is what happened is Dr. Stringham has stepped up, said he would do it on a temporary basis, so basically not to exceed $2,000 a month, we're, we're, think it would be about two to three months, and it is critical that we are able to get the nurse back in there because we had to immediately disconnect, discontinue the nurse going into the, into our jail. This Omicron, as you guys are all, is highly contagious, so when somebody comes into the jail without COVID and they contract this in the jail, we are responsible to get them the medical treatment that's necessary to get them back in the same condition as they were. So we have had an outbreak in the jail, I think of about five people, is that correct? So they have to go to the hospital where, where the amount is a lot more than, than what it is to continue the treatment with the nurse, having Dr. Stringham oversee the nurses. Is this all making sense? Is everybody tracking pretty good on that?
I think we did this before.
So that's why we are asking or requesting that Dr. Stringham continue to, or not to continue, but to start to oversee the nurse or nurses that are in the jail to, to oversee the medical commitment to our inmates for a short period of time. We do feel that Humboldt General is going to be able to re-sign the contract, it'll all fall, fall under Humboldt General at that time.
Yeah.
So to be clear on this, Dr. Stringham would provide the services now that you don't have a nurse there? Or you still have that nurse?
No, he would oversee the nurses to, to-
Now, and in the new contract, if you were to negotiate one with HGH, she would oversee the nurses then too.
No, not one HGH. So a nurse and, Under Sheriff Malone could probably, his medical background probably make this a little bit more clear than what I can.
So sure, Under Sheriff Kevin Malone for the record. So a nurse by law cannot practice medicine, they can only practice under a physician. So like right now, our nurse coming in, she needs basically that medical oversight by a physician, and then based on what Dr. Stringham would say, she would then, you know, provide whatever medications or medical care needed.
But what about a nurse practitioner? In Nevada, I think-
A nurse practitioner can practice on their own, I'm not sure if we have one. I know Captain Liniger had a nurse practitioner, Tina Carbone, coming in, but I believe she was still working under the hospice of Humboldt General Hospital.
So when the contract is changed over to Humboldt General, which is coming, you know, when they, when they review that old contract, then are we still looking at Dr. Stringham as the oversight, or would they would provide their own-
No, Humboldt General would provide their own oversight, and this, this is temporary, just until we get that contract in place.
Yeah, correct.
What were we paying for that, for the hospital, when they were overseeing it?
So the, how that worked before, this is Captain Chris Liniger for the record, our contract with Humboldt General was, they would provide a nurse practitioner to come into the facility once a week and see inmates. When we added this nurse program, so get the nurse, the nurse oversight was just done by an MOU under the physicians, so she wasn't under the contract, it was an MOU between her and her overseeing physician, which would have been Tina and Robert Johnson, the nurse practitioners. So like Sheriff said, when I reviewed this contract with Robyn, she did have some questions, we've got them squared away with Ms. Mindyall with our insurance side of it. The new contract I wrote up includes the oversight of the nurse practitioners or another qualified physician that would provide oversight and would provide our nurses in this contract. No fee for the oversight, they just get their fee for the inmate visits, the medical visits, when they come into the facility under the rate, I think it's $80 per an inmate that they bill us for that, so. And unless HGH is adding in a component for fees for the oversight, I haven't seen that yet, and I didn't propose that to them. But as of right now, December, they send us that Cease and Desist Letter for a nurse, and up to that point, we've kept COVID out of our facility, and unfortunately, during the month of January, we did get an outbreak, we just affected staff, our inmates, and the amount of, just to put in perspective, this $2,000 is going to be nothing compared to what we're going to pay in our medical in January from the hospital visits and ER visits that we're responsible for, because they caught it in the facility. So this is a small amount of money compared to the liability that we're holding right now.
It's a new cost, something we haven't paid for in the past.
Yeah, and I also have a, I did the request into the same grant that I am paying for Bev's salary out of through the state on the COVID funds, to allocate some of that money to pay for Dr. Stringham and the intern, and according to Robyn, I don't want to get off topic here, we're about a month, maybe a month and a half out, because it's got to go to, what's name is reviewing it to get it to Wendy, Malher, and then, you know, it's got to go in front of their board, got to go in front of our board, so it is a small amount of time, hopefully.
I think we had, those ARPA funds, we had $30,000 budgeted, if I remember right.
For the first quarter, for a sec, to put on a second nurse, I think we had $40,000 to spend, and then I think there's a total of $150,000 until the end of the ARPA funds. But I still have enough money in the other grant that I'm working off of, that money was to provide a second nurse. And any more delay, this is what I'm afraid of, that I had been afraid of, because Bev Shell has shown her dedication to us, that she's been out of work for a month, and if she just turned down another job hoping to get this resolution here going, but I am having a very hard time finding a second nurse. And if we lose her, we might lose this nurse program altogether, so.
So Sheriff, have you got the $2,000 in your budget too, please?
In, in the detention facilities budget, we do have a line item from inmate medical, and because the nurse has been in there, it has saved us some money, so I do believe we're not, we're not asking for any additional money in our budget, we'll be able to absorb it out of our existing.
Off that line item?
Yes.
It, it is a stopgap, I mean, we've got to do it, so. Motion? Comments? Motion?
I'll make a motion to approve a contract with Dr. Stringham for medical oversight of a nurse in Humboldt County Detention Center.
Motion on the floor, discussion on the motion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous.
Right, thank you.
Thanks, guys, thanks for waiting.
Did you find the flag?
Found the box.
The box is on.
I think there was mine.
Okay, so thank you for doing that.
As we'll go right to 14, Chairman.
District Attorney, Approval and Execution of Opioid Settlement Forms and Approval of Amendment One to the One Nevada Agreement on Opioid Recoveries. This is a discussion, consideration, possible approval of execution of the following items. Execution of Subdivision Settlement Participation Forms and Releases Pursuant to the One Nevada Agreement on Allocation of Opioid Recoveries. One Nevada Agreement Previously Agreed Upon for Participation in Settlements with the State of Nevada and Opioids Distributor Defendants. AmerisourceBergen Drug Corporation, Cardinal Health, McKesson as listed in Exhibit C and the One Nevada Agreement, and the State of Nevada and Opioid Manufacturer Defendant Jansen and Johnson and Johnson as listed in Exhibit C to the One Nevada Agreement for Possible Action.
This is, this is what we had the special meeting about, everybody remembers, just dot the i's. Anybody got any additional comment they want to make on this? Or a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we sign the agreements to the One Nevada Agreement and the Participation Form to Release for Distributor Agreement, and the Patient Form and Release for the Jansen and Johnson and Johnson Agreement final.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to accept the agreement under Section A as presented. Any additional comments on that? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item B, Execution of Plan Amendment Number One on the One Nevada Agreement on Allocation of Opioid Recoveries Regarding a Reduction in Attorney's Fees and the One Nevada Agreement for Purposes for the Two Settlements Only. Remember, that was the other set of forms we had to come up with, was the reduction in attorney's fees. Motion of it. Any, any motions, guys?
I thought that was included in the other, in my motion.
No, no, you got the first two, there was two sets of forms that we had to do.
You need one more. That's correct. One more.
Oh, okay, I remember.
One more motion.
Okay, I'd make a motion that we, with One Nevada Agreement on Allocation of Opioid Recoveries regarding the reduction in the attorney's fees to One Nevada Agreement for the purposes of these two settlements only.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor with regard to subsection B as presented. Any discussion on that motion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Okay, we have item 17, 911 Surcharge Committee Board Member Appointments as Consideration Discussion Possible Approval Pursuant to Humboldt County Code 8.44.030 to Reappoint Dave Garrison as the Winnemucca Police Department's Designee, Kevin Malone as the Humboldt County Sheriff's Office Designee, and Rick Grantham to the Humboldt County 911 Surcharge Advisory Committee Board for a Two-Year Term Ending December 31st, 2023.
Good morning, again.
Again.
I feel popular today. Humboldt County Under Sheriff Kevin Malone for the record, I'm also the Chair in of the 911 Surcharge Committee, and I'm just here to request that Rick Grantham, Dave Garrison, and myself be reappointed to the commission for two years. Rick and Dave's terms ended already, so we need to get them caught up, and then I don't expire until next month, but I will remain until the end of December.
Okay.
So we do, even though yours don't expire, we're going to want us to approve it.
Correct. Yeah, just so I don't have to come in front next meeting.
Sure.
I'll make a motion to approve the reappointment of Rick Grantham, Chief Dave Garrison, and Under Sheriff Kevin Malone to the Humboldt County 911 Board.
Would you please amend your motion to include the two-year term ending December 31st of 2023?
Okay, amend the motion to, to, for a term to expire in, is that '03, '20, no, what, what is it?
December 31st, 2023.
Okay, December 31st, 2023.
Okay, we have an amendment. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, we have an amendment. Any discussion on the motion or the amendment? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimous.
Excellent. Thank you. Have a great day. Yes. Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you very much. Have a good day.
Thanks, Kevin.
Mr. Chair, can we go back to minutes? That's one that we didn't quite clean up.
Back to the minutes?
Item four.
Approval of minutes. We've got two sets of minutes, July sixth, twenty twenty-one. Any look at those?
I did.
Okay, motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the July sixth, twenty twenty-one minutes as presented.
Motion on the floor, discussion on the motion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. The minutes for January eighteenth, twenty twenty-two.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Can you interrupt here real quick here? Commissioner Hill was not at that meeting, so he'll need to abstain on that one, on that first one.
Okay.
For the record.
For the record. Okay, we're now on item, second set of minutes, which is January eighteenth, twenty twenty-two. Anybody have any additions or subtractions to those? Okay.
I'm making a motion to approve the January eighteenth, twenty twenty-two minutes as presented.
Motion on the floor, discussion on the motion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Okay, move on to item nineteen, which is the approval of BLM Greater Sage Grouse Environmental Impact Statement Scoping Comments. Consideration discussion, possible approval regarding the Bureau Land Management's BLM WO twenty-three hundred twenty-two zero 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 one RMP EIS. Notice of intent to amend the two thousand fifteen and two thousand nineteen management plans published in the Federal Register on November twenty-second, twenty twenty-one. BLM will prepare environmental impact statements to support the planning initiative and is seeking comment on issues for analysis as well as the relevant data. Okay, we've talked about this in the past, Dave. Go ahead.
Right, I'll just make a few additional comments. So the letter was, the letter that is attached to the agenda here was amended slightly after we passed it around between Laura Grenier, Andy Reber got a hold of it, Eureka County looked at it. So we had a lot of input. And so there were a few changes to try to strengthen some of the, some of the language in there to make sure that we hold our feet to the fire with respect to FLIPMA and NEPA procedures. And so that was a copy that was sent out to you on Friday and was highlighted for you to look at. So those were the changes. I just wanted to make sure you knew that. This is due tomorrow. So we'll need to get this in.
Everybody had a chance to look at the amended letter then. Okay, pretty straightforward. It's, you know, it's our shot over the bow. So any, any further discussion on the item? How about a motion?
I will make a motion to accept the scoping comments as presented and approve the chairman to sign the comments and submit them to the BLM by February eighth, twenty twenty-two.
Mr. Mr. Chair, to Commissioner Jerry, would you just add in there with the additional comments that were sent out on Friday, which would have been the fourth, right?
Yeah, the amended comments.
With the amended comments.
Okay.
Because what's on the agenda was different. So I just want to make sure we're, we're applying it to that letter.
With the amended comments that were sent to us last week.
Okay, so we have a, have a motion and an amendment to the motion. Do you have any discussion on that? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Item twenty, miscellaneous reports and correspondence. Commissioner Hill, did you have any?
No, I had a meeting on January nineteenth for the Humboldt Development Authority. Just normal business, nothing really stood out too. And then I had a Paradise Valley Conservation District meeting last Thursday that I missed. Was not there.
Okay. Mr. Haas, do you have any?
This is Commissioner Haas. I had a LEPC meeting, Local Emergency Planning Committee, on the nineteenth. We updated members' information. We discussed the need to go to battery-powered equipment because of distance and terrain on many residents, or many incidents, I'm sorry. So we moved to pursue that. So, you know, when you start dragging hydraulic hoses from here to the front of the courthouse because you can't get any closer than that, it's pretty difficult. So they found that the battery operated. So what they're going to do is look for money and different stuff to purchase those. Carol Lynn was elected co-chair. We deleted the Civil Air Patrol as a voting member at this time because of nonparticipation. And Marcia Foreman is retiring soon. I didn't know that. So that was included in that meeting. That's all I have.
Okay. Mr. Tipton, you have anything?
I had a, I had a meeting with the county manager and city manager, the mayor, Jan Morrison with West Coast Salmon. It was an interesting meeting. They had the CEO, the COO, and I forget what the other one's name was, but we had lunch at the Martin. We had an active conversation with him for what, hour and a half, probably. I wouldn't say there was anything really new came out of it, except that their, their plans have been held back a little bit, just getting things in order. But they're going forward with it. They were headed, when they left that meeting, they were headed to Los Angeles for their funding round. I haven't heard anything since. I don't know if Dave has or not.
I have not.
But, so that was interesting. Then I had a hospital board meeting that evening, and it was relatively a short meeting as well. Our numbers, of course, with this Omicron, our numbers in the hospital have been all over the place, really. They've been up and they were down at that meeting that night. We didn't have anybody in, for that. But I know something was going on last Sunday. I had, or last Monday or Tuesday, I had my dad in the emergency room, and there were no beds left in the hospital at that time. So we're continuing on there, trying to, to get our, our revenue structure complete. It's been a mess, and it probably will take most of the rest of the year to get it in, in place. We have a busy schedule already for Dr. Mater, orthopedic surgeon, doing hip replacements, knee replacements. People are booking him. So I think in my five years there, I think this is probably the first time that I can actually see a light at the end of the tunnel for things to really get good there.
Good. It seems to me that the interim CEO has got a lot of energy, and she's pushing pretty hard.
Well, she is, and she's, she's including pretty much everybody. I think she's doing a good job. She's local. I mean, I think she was, I'm not sure where she was raised, but I think Battle Mountain. Her family's here. She has an interest in making sure things are done right and, and not in every area. So, look, things are starting to look good to me there.
Good, good. The other question I had, Ken, was, was the group that was here this morning?
No, I'm sure they'll be at our next one.
Just wondering, because I, I think they see this group as the, as the energy or the entity that's going to make those changes. And I just was curious about it.
Well, you know, the, I know they would like to see some changes, but I, I know that at least some of them don't understand the funding mechanism for critical access hospital. And by far, the largest amount of revenue collected at a, at a critical access hospital is through Medicare and Medicaid. And even though the president's mandate was struck down on businesses and, and other places by the Supreme Court, it was left in place for hospitals, critical access hospitals. So if you don't follow those mandates, you don't get funding for Medicare and Medicaid. And if we didn't give funding for Medicare and Medicaid, our hospitals have to close its doors. That's, that's the bottom line. One of the things that was brought up that wasn't specific, but it did come out there was people that had exemptions at the hospital, employees that did get exemptions. And through, through protocol, if they have exemptions, you have to separate them and their, you know, they have to wear masks when they work, but they, they have to be separated like at EMS from the others to sleep. So we've had to spend extra money to provide sleeping arrangements for those people so they can continue to work. I mean, it's, it's all part of it that we have no say over. It's not that others care about it. It's just something that's written in the act to do.
If we're going to maintain this Medicare funding and whatnot, we have no choice.
Yep. And we don't, we, we didn't lose one employee at the hospital over the mandate. Everybody was either vaccinated or exempted.
That's a good thing.
It was.
If it went the other way, really, really bad.
Well, and I think a lot of that credit goes to our interim CEO, to Robin. I mean, she, she put the committees together to look at the exemptions. She put it out to people to get vaccinated and those that didn't go through the exemptions. And when they did those exemptions, there wasn't a name that came in on it. It was like a number, so you didn't know. And I mean, if everything was, was done correctly there, we're able to keep our book going forward without losing anybody.
That's good.
Ron?
Two or three meetings. I don't have my notes. I left them at home, but I'll try to remember. WCVA meeting. I had a lot of requests for, for funding to help with some events. We had an audit that we approved that will go to the state. And room taxes still in, doing really, really well, amazingly well. Of course, room rates have gone up, so room taxes are a little higher. So WCVA is sitting very well as far as ending fund balance and, and money in the bank. So then we had, I had a meeting with Andy Reber in regards to a sage grouse, part of our, our land use plan, master plan, in regards to sage grouse and, and grazing. That went real, real well. I think she's about got that complete, and we should be seeing that here pretty soon. Had a meeting with BLM, our monthly kind of meetings. They basically filled us in on where we are on, where they are on fire and ready for the next fire season, and, and what they've done to help other communities like Orovada was, and not Orovada, but primarily McDermott, get fire trucks because they're burned up last year. And now they've got more fire trucks, and I think they've got firemen. So they're in good shape. And, you know, I, I think the discussion came up on Soldier Meadows and stuff like that. And, you know, typical BLM jargon, you, you get, you can have a question, but you don't really get an answer, you know. I still don't know.
Different question.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, that was about all.
Did you, Ron, did you, in your WCVA meeting, did you get a request from the trap club to, for money to rent generators?
Not that I remember, no.
They had reached out to me and looked at the hospital for a generator, and we didn't feel like the hospital, we could do that. And so I talked to Dawn, because the county I knew had one, and didn't really feel like we could afford to do that. So I had reached out for them, to Cashman, and they had one that they would rent. It was eight hundred and some dollars. And I suggested that they go to WCVA for that. It's for their state meet, I think. They hold here.
Sounds like something that'd be a good thing to bring to WCVA. It fits right in with.
I really thought it fit with WCVA.
We, we, there's a lot of support from WCVA towards the trap club or whenever.
The other question I have for you has to do with, with your work with the, with the planning and the sage grouse. Do you, you see anything happening there? Or does it look like we'll be back in litigation again like we were last time?
I don't know. I, I, we're going to be in litigation whether it's us that bring it forward or, or those that don't like what we do, or, or, you know, mining and grazing and stuff. These type of documents never get a hundred percent support from either side. Just who's got the lawyers, who's got the money?
Well, I was thinking about that. I'm thinking here in another couple of weeks when we get into budgets, we're going to have to plan for that. I think we should.
Yeah.
Yep.
Might be.
The letters that, in fact, I'm going to pass this out. This is a letter that Public Land Steering Committee, the chairing is, has, we put together for, behalf of NACO. It's very similar to what we wrote through Andy and whatnot, but this is our version, NACO version. And, and it's our comments to, to that whole question of the EIS and the changes that they are proposing to go back to in two thousand fifteen, fourteen. To answer your question, I, this, the, the way these are worded and the way the, the documents were worded that we wrote, the, the letters we wrote, it's maintaining our standing. And the idea behind it, according to Laura Grenier, was we, first and foremost, we need to maintain standing because we are one of the three counties that took this to federal court. And because she feels that the, that this administration is probably going to push it forward. They've got Western Watersheds behind it, behind some sort of litigation. I think we're what we stand, we have a good stand, good position on, on our, with this. And we just reasserted a lot of the arguments we made the first time. But those arguments are going to be the ones that we're going to be talking about if it goes to federal court, the ones that are in this and our letter. So, you know, it's obviously, it's, I don't see, think we'll see it before this election, but I do think we're going to see a, a decision come down from Department of Interior sometime late this year or early next year on sage grouse and, and trying, well, they're going to try to, they're going to have to relitigate it, is what's going to happen. Because they, they've reinstituted the sage brush focal area map, which was a big, big mistake the first time. They're trying to, they're trying to put lipstick on the pig right now and trying to make it look like something is, that they actually had a chance to analyze. The truth is, and the discussion was, we had the discussion, was that they, their staff hasn't even been on the ground. So there is no ground truthing on any of it. It's just a little bit more information from Endow. And, and it's, I think it's, it's weak at best. The other side had to do with the socioeconomic impact statement that they didn't provide the first time that are required by NEPA to provide. They're saying that because the state or the University of Nevada Reno has put one together, that, that they're actually falling back on that. And, but they haven't done any analysis based on that data. They have to say, okay, what will this action do relative to socioeconomics and, and the, the social aspects of the communities? And so they, and it isn't just Humboldt County. It isn't just Elko County, it's, or Eureka County. It's, it's across the breadth of that, that Great Basin. It's it's across the breadth of that, that Great Basin, that portion of the Great Basin that they include in the S F A map, which is about 10 million acres. So it it's a much, much bigger thing. I don't get the impression they're going to try to do a socioeconomic impact statement. That will, that's going to be a major shot, and we actually listed it here. That's going to be a shot we'll take out of it with in the board again.
I think it's highly likely to, my personal opinion is, that U S Fish, U S Fish and Wildlife Service will list the bird. I think they're setting it up to to do that with numbers that, whether they're true or not, they probably are, with the droughts and the fires we've had, the numbers have decreased on sage grouse in a lot of areas drastically. So it's going to be difficult for them, I think, not to do some type of listing on that bird.
That's their fallback vote. When this, if they end up in court and it doesn't look like their solicitor isn't supporting this action, that'll be the fallback vote. They're going to list the bird. So so that's just the beginning of it again. We just, we're getting, it's like Groundhog Day, we're getting to relive it again. So I just wanted to give you guys a copy of what our comments were from the Public Land Steering Committee. The other thing is, I have been asked to be on the hiring team to hire the new public lands manager for the, for Naco. I reviewed all of the applicants' resumes that came through, and I made recommendations back to Executive Director, and he and I are supposed to get together this week, actually, to to actually go get the top three out of that for interviews. I'll keep you up to speed on that. But my idea behind it was, I don't want a PhD, I don't, I don't even want a lawyer. We had a lawyer last time, but they don't have a real, most lawyers don't, that I've dealt with, don't have a real strong public lands background. And to find one that has is really difficult to do. Any rate, I, none of them that I reviewed had public lands backgrounds, had a couple of them from South Africa, and had one from New Zealand, and had a guy, a couple of PhDs that wanted to, wanted to do it. And and I'm looking for, we were looking for people more pragmatic, you know, somebody that, you know, a Jake Tibbetts kind of guy is what we're looking for. So anyway, I'll keep you up to speed as that thing progresses, as we're moving forward on that pretty quick right now, trying to get somebody in place. We had, we passed the legislative federal priorities for Naco and P L N R. We actually presented it to the Naco Board, and they passed it. Two big considerations had to do with land withdrawals and policy for land withdrawals, which is is kind of a new policy that that federal government's under. And we came up with a policy basically stating no, no net loss of of public land and lands which are currently managed the way they are. And we, our position with regard to full funding of of P I L in the future, that's a standing deal, but we were pushing real hard for this to become a line item in the budget as opposed to a mother may I. So make sure that 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 is a, you know, that's a dollar figure that we can actually build budgets around. First time ever, we approved unanimously to have a a subcommittee in Naco comprised of county managers from all counties. And that's a big deal because a lot of the county managers bring a lot of the day to day stuff that's going on, and they do a lot of coordinating internally between themselves. And a lot, and and a lot of the counties did not want to involve in that unless they had a formal assignment under, for a subcommittee status. So we created one, and and obviously, our, our county manager will serve on that. This, see, I was asked to, they've, they've pushed my name forward to the governor's office to serve on the governor's board for outdoor recreation. That's a, that is a appointment that is, is basically a policy related, similar to Sloopak, but it has to do with the formal outdoor recreation side, side of thing all the way from non-consumptive to consumptive side. They wanted me to serve on it because of my background, not here, but before. It's a, it's a, it's something I can serve on after I retire from here, and I'll probably finish out that one, that that appointment, if I'm appointed. The governor might not see fit to appoint me to it, but they moved my name forward on it. And last but not least, I had a conversation, it wasn't on the agenda, with Justice Hardesty from Supreme Court. I think I talked with Commissioner Haas about this, and we were talking about the cost to the counties for the Supreme Court decision that required us to redo our courts and whatnot. Explained to him that, you know, if I'm Clark County and I got a billion dollar budget, you know, adding some seats to a couple of courtrooms is fly specks. Humboldt County, it's $9 million, and it's a big deal. And I said, it's, it's, it's not a small thing, it's a big thing. And I said, we're, we're not complying right now. We're talking about having, holding court in trailers, we're talking about holding court across the street in our, in our convention center because we can't, we simply don't have the money right away to do it. And I asked him, I said, I'm not complaining, I understand that Supreme Court does what it does. And I said, but is there, was the Supreme Court thinking about maybe a grant program that would allow for counties that are cash strapped to apply for grants to actually comply with this? And he goes, and he didn't even blink. He said, absolutely. So I, I mentioned that, I mentioned it to us because I want to make sure we take a run at Justice Hardesty to make sure that if there's money on the table, that we can grab on this to, and think big. We, I mean, there, there was a couple of counties that were involved that, very similar to ours, Esmeralda, for instance, is asking for a building for theirs.
Didn't White Pine get a building?
Where's that?
In one of the counties, White Pine got a.
Got a building out of it. Yeah. So I think we should, I think she would take a run at it, really put some, I think it's a great opportunity anyhow, so. And any rate, I have my schedule, I've got Nevada Works starting Wednesday, I've got Sloopak on Thursday, I've got Nevada Works Board of Directors on Friday, and I've got I A F, the I A F program coming up on the end of the month, along with Naco Board of Directors. So that's all I had. So let's see, we could go to.
Agenda.
Yeah. Is it on the agenda? Did we miss anything? I jumped around quite a bit.
No, I think we are at 21.
Future agenda items. Dave, did you have anything that came out of that?
Yeah, I do, I've got a few here. So we've got the continuance of the public hearing that'll go to, out to February 22nd on that one. We'll include that, excuse me. Also, a question to the, we talked a little bit about it on the Thacker Pass Concerned Citizens, a letter, a separate letter coming from the commission, I think it was Commissioner Haas brought it up. Do you want me to bring something like that back on February 22nd?
Yeah, I, 22nd or even, when do we meet with it?
22nd, the 23rd to 24th to 25th. This might as, look, kind of like we, we, we're not interested in what's happening in Humboldt County. And even without them coming in and asking to be part of something, that that road out there, Ron, as you well know, is just absolutely out of, out of control. And so by letting the state know that we know that we're having problems with it up here, and to, you know, go ahead and and put together a letter from Humboldt County Commissioners to that that road needs attention, it needs to be changed, it needs to be done now, I would sure appreciate it.
Yeah, I don't disagree with that. And I, I think we need to do it multiple times, depending on what happens down the road. I'm not necessarily a rubber stamp, but kind of turn the heat up like we did with the Bureau of Land Management having to do with some of the projects around here, we just, just kind of dog them.
You know, this is a big project. It's going to bring, it's a huge project, it's going to be a lot of, a lot of new people and come in, there's going to be a lot of money come in. There's, there's going to be a number of places, times that I think this commission is going to be called upon to to react or or support or not support, whatever, as this moves on.
This, this idea of 95 even being a possibility of of an I 11 would give the state an opportunity to figure out how they're going to get around or through Orvada for that, they could fix this problem with that in mind. I, I really think that when we have our meeting with with Endow, not Endow, but Endot, that we try to get some commitments from them, and then our letter should enforce, follow what they committed to us at our meeting too, and then go back and put as much pressure as we can on.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, much like we do at Thacker Pass Group, we can't just have one meeting, and they say they're going to do something, and then they don't, and next time they come, next, a year from then, they come, and we do the same thing again. I think it's something we need to follow up on throughout the year, you know, and and stress our, our needs and ask them what they're doing about it. You know, I, I don't know if it, I hate to read this into it, but, you know, they're going to redo from Paradise Hill all the way to McDermott this summer. It's going to be a big project, it's going to take all summer. Well, they've got, they've went out there and they've surveyed, it looks like they're going to widen that road, at least the shoulders. Now, I, I would think that that's probably what you do before you prepare to go the next step, and that's to create more lanes. So maybe they are looking, and I'm going to ask them that question if, if, you know, the work they're, they look like they're going to be doing. I know the gravel pit that they use is right below Rebel Creek there, it's right on Rebel Creek. They've got equipment moving in there now to probably start crushing rock and stuff. So, you know, they're not real forthcoming in what they're doing. Just, they don't like to be told what to do and.
Do you think we should have several meetings, try to get it with with Endot and the state people? And also, probably on our R T C meetings, we should be asking them every single meeting so that they, they can push back above and say, hey, that I'm getting asked this all the time.
I would agree with that. The other thing I think that really we need to start doing, we've talked about it in the past, is start attending the Endot Board meetings. And we can get on, we can try to get on the agenda. I understand that's very difficult, tried once before and never, was not successful a couple of years ago, three years ago. But we did go, if you recall, Garley, Amos and I went, it might have been one of you guys, I can't remember, I know Garley was with me, and we actually went in public comment and talked about the I 11. Now, that's when Governor Sandoval was the chair of that board, but we haven't been back since, so maybe that's something that we should maybe start at least every other month or something, getting a letter into them or show up and do public comment, at least if we can get on.
Are you Chair of R T C?
No, I'm Michael.
Are you Vice Chair?
Okay, yes, I was Chair last year, so we do the same thing there as we do here and rotate.
So maybe I'm getting on the agenda, that I'm wondering if Vice Chair or Chair from the R T C would have a lot better chance of getting, or a member of R T C getting on on transportation on their schedule, because obviously, they're, they would have something pertinent to bring to them.
Maybe.
Make a request based on their membership at R T C.
Okay.
And I, and I continue to have discussions with Masto's people. I've got a, they're coming out to, it's going to be three of Masto's people coming out to our group meeting in March. This is, we're, we're scheduled that way, if they can make it work, you know, how things go. But they're supposed to come out and and get a, listen to, listen to what we, what the issues are, what, what issues we're, we've got, hopefully look where they can help, you know. I, I, we're taking the point of, the view is, you know, we have our issues with, problems with, with what's happening in that community, how it's going to change that community big time. But we've accepted the fact that it's probably going to happen whether we like it or not. Now, if we're, don't sacrifice that community for the good of this state, for the good of this county, for the good of the nation. Help us get, get through there, and you have an obligation to do that, you know.
Get the impacts.
Right.
Absolutely. Yeah, I think that's a real, that's a very reasonable thing, and it's a great strategy. I mean, you start talking, when you get that group out there that you're talking about that are going to meet, and you talk about then the, that cooperating, cooperative agreement between lithium and community in terms of that intersection and whatnot, and, you know, hey, we've got people spending money here, the county wants to, made requests on such and such a dates, we're right on the cusp of a big change in this community, and, and we all know we've got a huge problem with this road. We're not looking for a stop sign.
No. You know, and I've dealt in politics just long enough to understand that it makes their jobs easier too, whether it's a senator or a governor or a state representative, to get the fundings and help and with the capacity that they have to get some projects done when all the groups agree on it, and you're not fighting. I mean, if you, they're not going to come in and throw, throw $100 million on 95 if you've got somebody over here that's saying, I'm opposed to it, I don't want it, you know, or they're not going to build a new school out there if the community, if one, one of the factor factions is not for it, you know. You've got to come to get together, it makes their job easier, it makes it easier for them to, you know, dish out the dollars that it takes to make this if everybody's on the same page in agreement.
Yeah.
And that's kind of what, what we're, the avenue that we were taking, there's certain things we'll never agree on, but where we can agree, let's work on it together and get what's best, not only for the community, but for the company too.
As much money on the table as we can.
So the problem with, what I see with L N C is that they're not willing to put it in writing, not willing to do anything for you. And I know that sounds harsh, but I see it through, even through this letter that they wrote. It was L N C that wrote the letter.
That's not right and true, Tom. Three meetings ago with Thacker Pass Group, we met, we, we had, we had Tim, Alexi on video, because Lexi's stuck in Canada, he can't get out because of COVID. But he was on there, and we made it really clear that we were tired of talking, that's all we'd been doing is talking, we want their name on, we want to see their name put on some paper. That right there is the first time they put their name on anything. And now they're going to put their name on, on a paper that says that, you know, they're willing to fund any type, we find a place, they'll fund building a school out there. They've said that they're going to put their name on that. They wanted to put that, I call it a trailer park or a man camp out there on that property. We were, they told us in the beginning they wouldn't do that, they would do it maybe in Winnebago, but they weren't going to do it out there. But when we heard about that, pretty much set the community to the point that it almost dissolved. So Alexi met with us, they bought some other property up there by where the mine is, they've agreed that they would, if they're going to build a camp, they would put it there, but it would only be for their bosses. They would not bring just the regular employees. So that's going to limit it to less than 30, you know, trailers or whatever they put there. But those are the kind of things that, that we have accomplished, and he's willing to put his name on now.
That's good to see.
Yeah.
You know, that's what, what this was all began with. And we have to get them to put their names on an agreement so that in, if this does go through in the future, start having problems up there, Orvada, Kings River.
go through in the future, start having problems up there, Orvada, Kings River, McDermott have, you know, something to, to fall back on and say, look, here's the agreement we agreed on, we want to be heard, because we want to be. You know, once, once that all goes through, the mines do what they want to do. You know, and, believe it or not, the, the biggest thing here is, is my liking of the area and, and want to keep those people as safe as possible. I still foresee that if the pumps get turned on, you guys are going to lack water in a short period of time. And that's what scares me the most, I think.
Well, there's still a couple of things that are holding up them even getting started there. Of course, the big ones, lawsuits that are against them, you know, the environmental groups and the, and the tribes. But they also haven't received final approval on the, the move in the water up where they, off of agriculture up to their new point, yeah, point of diversion changes. They're still waiting on that. It was supposed to have been done, I think, in November, and they still haven't gotten a ruling on that. And so, you know, their timeline, they were going to start by now, and, and now they're looking mid-year, not late, late this year. Then they've got a, they, you know, the, the whole EIS process is on the table in this lawsuit, are they going to have to start over? And it depends, it's up to the judge. Judge's rules not in their favor, it's, it's going to even take longer, they're going to have to start over again.
But it's got to be done right. That, that's, that's all I'm saying, is we've got to take everybody into consideration, you know, and not take away the, not take away your livelihood from you and, and different stuff and the rest of the people up there.
Until they get some of this stuff figured out, they're still having trouble getting the necessary funding to get the project going.
Venture capital's not going to be there until they get the last permit signed.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, I have a couple of other things on future agendas. So I'm bringing back on the 22nd Shooting Park Letter of Support for the BLM comments. Period is open right now. And so I've, I've done that letter, and I'll bring that back on the 22nd, so. Also, might have a Union Pacific Communications Tower Agreement. Been working on it for two years, and we've been kind of gone back and forth with UP Legal and, and our District Attorney's Office, and there was a couple of other changes we made, but it is in front of them now. It looks to be clean, but I'll know when they get back to me, so. And that's, that's a critical one for a couple of reasons. Number one, they've been up there using the site for a couple of years. But it's also $180,000 in cash that, that they need to pay us for. And then also, they're, they've got two years due, actually three years due of their site fees, which will be another $200,000 or so. So it's a little change out there that we need to get from them. And then West Coast Salmon is going to do an update on February 22nd as well. Ralph Ron will be back here.
What happened to our other nuisance complaint? We're making good progress on this one.
Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up. I actually made a note to myself here to find out.
And it's, is why it crossed my mind again.
Yeah, and, and I thought the same thing, is that that one had gone nowhere, but we've seemed to have made some progress on this one, and we're getting closer. So what I'll do is I'm going to reach out to Levi, I'll get an update, and talk with Tammy, and we'll try to figure out where we left off and where we might be able to go, so.
Give us an update.
Talk with Wendy as well, of course, when we do that.
Do we have an update then next?
Yeah.
Any, any other items or questions? Okay, last item is public comment. Any additional public comment? Not seeing any additional public comment at this meeting's adjourned.
I think it's my turn to buy lunch. I'm going to lunch.
Oh.